This meeting of the Aurora City Council for August 8, 2023 to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Donnell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Urbans present.
Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now I have Alderman Patty Smith lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, followed by an invocation by Alderman Ed Bug.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Far ahead. Father God, we thank you for this evening. We come before you and ask you for wisdom and insight as we do the bidding for the people of the city of Aurora. We thank you for our first responders. We thank you for our veterans and those who are serving us all across the world. Lord, we have special friends today, people who are seeking out an opportunity to serve. And we think of our dear sister who is gone and will never be replaced. God, again, we ask you for wisdom and insight. We pray all this in the name of your son. Amen.
Amen.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment of a sergeant-at-armed for this meeting? Motion made by Alderman Garza, second by Alderman Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Let's go on to mayor appointments. Madam Clerk, will you read the first item under mayor appointments?
Twenty-three dash zero six two seven, recognition. Oh, I'm sorry. Twenty-three dash zero two three seven, a resolution approving the appointment of Vimy Shukla and Yodi Sharaha to the Indian American Community Outreach Advisory Board.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Motion made by, sorry, do we have both individuals here in the room with us today? Want to just raise your hand just so we can see. All right, good. Motion made by Alderman Garza, second by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussions regarding the appointment of these two fine ladies? There being none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Let's give Vimy and Yati a round of applause for her being served. Ladies, I'm just gonna have you step up to the front with me. We can take a picture together. You hold up your awards. All right, one more round of applause. All right, let's go on to the Mayor's Office of Community Affairs presentation. Mr. Mohammed?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We have a full house tonight for a number of reasons, and a couple of those reasons are two honorees that we have tonight who are representing us at the state level and at the national level. We are so proud that the newest appointee to the Illinois State Board of Education is an Aurora resident and an Aurora teacher. Please give a big round of applause for Laura Gonzalez. Oh, yes, listen. Oh, yeah. Laura's a skilled and passionate bilingual educator whose experience ranges from elementary and higher education. She currently serves as an educator at Aurora University, as an undergraduate adjunct professor, and a bilingual second grade teacher at Georgetown Elementary. While at Georgetown, she collaborates with other grade-level and bilingual teachers to plan and create student-driven lessons, assessments that promote learning and engagement, and uses a combination of project-based and digital assessments. She's been a leader in the classroom and is the Region Fifty-two Chair on the Illinois Education Association, the IEA Board of Directors, the IEA Country for Early Career Educators, a board member, was one of five teachers that represented Illinois Public School District Two-O-four at the Illinois Teacher Leadership Summit. She is also a board member and the Scholarship Director of the Aurora Puerto Rican Cultural Council. Give them a cue here. She received her Bachelor of Science from Benedictine University, Master of Arts in Teaching from Aurora University, and now she represents the entire state of Illinois, right here from Aurora, Illinois State Board of Education member Laura Gonzalez.
Give it up for Laura Gonzalez, representing the whole state. You know, it is my honor to read this Mayor's Award of Excellence. It's honorably, honorably presented to Laura Gonzalez for your appointment to the Illinois State Board of Education and for being a constant voice for educational excellence and equity for all students of Aurora. And now, all students of the state of Illinois, give it up one more time.
I didn't know I was gonna talk. They don't wanna give me a mic. I don't know how to stop talking. If he talks, I talk more. You know what? This is such a humbling experience for me. I really am still dumbfounded over the fact that I was chosen for this wonderful opportunity to be able to represent education at the state level. And from my understanding, based on what I've been hearing, I am the first educator on that board, and I'm active. I'm the first active. And so it's just, for me, it's an honor as an educator to be able to represent these students, to be able to represent all the educators. And I'm talking about from certified to classified, every single person that's in those school buildings. For me, I am going to be that representative, that voice for every single one, because every single one matters in education. And I really, I really am humbled to just be here, to be here in the city council amongst all of you. I have wonderful parents that have raised me very well, and I'm so lucky to be able to also represent the Puerto Rican community here in Aurora. It's such, it's just wonderful to be a Latina and to be able to be a voice and to also be a voice for my ELL students and those newcomers coming from other countries that do not have a voice at this time because they don't speak that language. So I just wanna thank you all. Seriously, I normally have a lot to say, but I really, I really don't know what else to say other than thank you. This is an amazing honor, and I really, really hope that I can make every single one of you proud that I am from Aurora and I represent Aurora in that Illinois State Board.
Come on, Laura, you already niggas proud. Give her a round of applause. We do, when we take our break and the mayor dismisses, we wanna take a group picture of Laura, the family, and the council, everyone, right? One more round of applause for her. Congratulations, Laura. She represents us on the state level, and we have another amazing lady who represents us on the national level. This year, Restaurant Magazine named Managers of the Year of Restaurants all throughout the United States of America, and we are so proud that one of their three winners, three national winners, right here, the manager, Ed Enduro. Make some noise for Wendy Lopez.
Give it up for Wendy Lopez. Come on down, Wendy.
In three, in just three short years, she went from cook to manager and was recognized by restaurant business as one of the winners of the General Manager of the Year contest. Each of the general managers demonstrated an exceptional ability over the course of the last year and were deserving winners. The leader of the organization says the general manager is the most important position in the restaurant industry. This person can be the difference between a restaurant that closes and one that remains open. The GM of the Year were chosen by a panel of judges under these categories: financial acumen, recruitment and retention, leadership ability, talent development, diversity, and creating a positive work culture. We're so honored that Laura was received the honor this year at the National Restaurant Association Show in Chicago. Again, the national winner, Manager of the Year, right here from Aurora, Illinois.
Give it up for Wendy Lopez. This Mayor's Award of Excellence is honorably presented to Wendy Lopez for earning the 2023 General Manager of the Year award, presented by Restaurant Magazine for your leadership, and that's throughout our country. At Enduro Coffee, right here in downtown Aurora. Give her a round of applause.
Thank you, everybody.
Give her another round of applause.
Thank you. Again, we, I know Cody's here, Cody Lawrence, the leader of Enduro, the founder, and the entire team as well. Thanks for everything. Another round of applause for Laura Gonzalez and Wendy Lopez. I'm gonna turn this next group over to the mayor, these distinguished individuals seated on the front row. As the Alderman Edward Bug said earlier, seeking the seat of our dear late great Alderwoman Shakita Hartburns. Before I turn it to the mayor, we had fourteen applicants, fourteen applicants for the position. Eight men, six women, five black, four Latino, four white, one Asian, and they come from all the zip codes of the ward. Six oh five oh five, six oh five oh four, six oh five oh two, representative, representing the ward exceptionally well. And we're honored tonight to have the finalists with us, who I'll interview with the mayor, who will share comments and introduce them to introduce themselves. Thank you.
You know, as Alderman Bug pointed out, Alderman Hartburns and her longevity and service here to the community can never, ever be replaced. But we know we need to find someone very, very good to sit in that seat in the Seventh Ward. That'll be the only second person that's ever sat in that seat. And we found seven individuals, seven for Ward Seven, that would fit that mold to continue the excellence that has been shown in that, in that community for decades. I'd like to introduce the first speaker. Everyone will get up and have an opportunity to speak for, for two minutes. And they're now at the ward, and I want you all to see what we saw when they interviewed. First, that first individual from the Seventh Ward that would like to be the sitting Alderman is Alex Arroyo. Alex, you wanna step up? Let's give him a round of applause if he steps up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. I have so many friends I was not expecting. When the opportunity arose to apply for the Seventh Ward Alderman's seat, I asked myself, why do I wanna be an Alderman? And I reflected back at the time I served with Shakita, Alderman Hartburns, on the Back to School Fairs, on TBOC Committee, and many other community events. And likewise, many of you have come to our Easter War events. We've worked together over the years. Mr. Mayor, last week you said, we need to move forward. And those of you who are raised in Aurora, the Aurora of today is not the Aurora fifty years ago. And the work you're doing today will affect the Aurora fifty years from now. And that includes economic development, education opportunities, jobs, and growth. I'm currently in my eighth term, my eighth year on the Easter War School Board. I have served on the Finance Committee, Bones and Grounds, and Policy and Personnel, and I've learned a lot. In my eight years, we have had fifty million dollars in new construction. We have increased student achievement and graduation rates. We've also been able to get heating and conditioning in our schools, and we got done, never was said to be done, we got school buses finally. The last district in the state of Illinois to get school buses for our kids. All this was done without raising taxes. You make those hard decisions, and we got it done. Alderman Lash, you know about that. Then, we're at the point now we have the lowest tax rate in all of Kane County. My pleasure to you, Alderman. I will come to meetings prepared. I will listen. I will learn about your wards and your concerns, and we'll cross city lines. But ultimately, we're gonna have our banter, east versus west, versus DuPage. That's okay. We gotta have fun while we're up here, but I will work with all of you to make a better Aurora. Thank you.
Next up in alphabetical order is Diane Barajas Gonzalez. Give her a round of applause.
Hello, everyone. I'm Diane Barajas Gonzalez. Thank you for this opportunity today. I was born and raised in Seventh Ward, which once was a marginalized community. I lived here and have experienced many different changes that our neighborhood has had, from saturated gang violence and drug-infested streets, to more positives like the TBOC program that Alex just mentioned, which my father also served on and took part of, and to seeing doors opening for minority business owners. I've seen this happen right on our blocks. I am Seventh Ward. I attended Allen Elementary, Simmons Junior High, then graduated from Easter War High School. I absolutely love my city. I love all the wonderful changes that have been made. I grew up here. I started my family here, and I've invested my businesses here. I have a heart for advocacy. I enjoy building relationships, but what, what's most important to me is inclusiveness. I believe all people should be included to all the great things our city has to offer, no matter what racial or sexual orientation they are. A tiny bit about me, I currently manage, coach, and do some mentoring in my business. I also am employed with Mutual Ground here in Aurora, where I'm a domestic violence and sexual assault advocate. I believe in family values. I'm a people person. I enjoy working with teams, and I'm also detailed-oriented. I take pride in where I live and where I'm from. We are one Aurora, and I'm excited to help and carry on the legacy of what Mrs. Burns has started, and I'm also excited to implement some new ideas to help unite our ward.
Another round of applause to Diane Barajas. Our next individual left to speak is Drew Eddy. Drew, give him a round of applause if he posts.
I would like to also thank you guys. It's an honor and privilege to be in front of you in my adopted hometown. I say that I've adopted. I've been here for thirty-four years, longer than anywhere else, in my entire life. I've been a resident of Ward Seven, which is what is now Ward Seven, for fifteen years. I, the legacy that Alderman Hart, Alderwoman Hartburns will be tough for any of us to carry on, but I'd love to do the best I could to do that, the Back to School Bash, the Martin Luther King Junior Fun Fest, the Code Drives. The list goes on and on what all she'd started and needs to continue, as has been said before. But the one thing I'm just very proud of is the fact that Aurora is becoming just a, over the last six years has just become wonderfully, the economic growth, the revitalization that I've seen, the businesses. I encourage all my friends to come to Aurora as opposed to other places. I come down here. I frequent all the places downtown on the east side. But Ward Seven needs to have economic growth as well. The, the Easter War High School is, is very vital, and I think that that's terrific, what you guys did for that. Grocery stores, there's one grocery store in the entire Ward Seven, and that is the Aldi. There needs to be other things, shops, stores, manufacturing facilities, minority businesses. Job fairs, need to bring job fairs that will, that will help the company, the, the community and the companies in the area as well. There's a lot of great opportunities that I think that the Ward Seven constituents would, would be filled with. It would be a privilege to serve under City Council and help the entirety of the Ward Seven. I'm not a politician. I'm not a polished speaker, as you can tell. I just genuinely love the city of Aurora and Ward Seven, and I would be proud to serve this ward.
Our next finalist is Cynthia Gamboa.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Cynthia Gamboa, and what I would like to share with you is consistency and background on why I wanna be the next appointed Alderwoman and help fulfill the remaining term of Shakita Hartburns. After ten years, I have been preparing for this role, for this opportunity to share with you a little bit of my background. In 2020, when the world shut down, I didn't shut down and close down. I went and I canvassed Silver Oaks Community Center, the senior living community, and prepared to make sure that my elderly neighbors had access to food and toiletries during the peak of the pandemic. I also founded Women of Aurora, who now help me sustain this program that's been going on for three years to help our elderly and most vulnerable community. They helped me by volunteering every month, and I'm able to consistently deliver on my promise to them. I'm also, if you haven't heard but may know, that in communities like Oswego, Naperville, and the Tri-Cities, I'm known as Cynthia from Aurora, and they don't know. and the tri-cities, I'm known as Cynthia from Aurora, and they don't know my last name, they only know me as Cynthia from Aurora. For the work that I have done with the Cups Bra Drive Organization, which I am very proud to say that we serve women and girls who are experiencing homelessness and domestic violence, this year we will have gathered over ten thousand bras to bring to the community and worldwide. I continue to do this because I am a servant of my community, and I have done this in the past. So my background and my track record will show that I can and should be able to fulfill the, the role that is of a elderman. I have established campus crawl, college campus crawls at Easter War High School. I have also graduated ELL students and helped them gain and obtain scholarships. I've worked as a mentor for the Illinois Board of Education and mentored programs at Quad County Urban League. I am also a representative of Kaskakee County and serving on the board right now, again, representing Aurora. As a King County recruiter for the Pat Quinn Administration, I put to work one hundred and forty-three members of Aurora across the city in just one year alone. As a career services advisor for Resmus University, I was also able to turn a failing placement opportunity from sixty-seven percent at the college to a excelling ninety-three percent rate, and that helped put not only students that are non-traditional students in Aurora to work, but also across campuses nationwide. As a small business owner, I understand the need for small business needs and wins, and therefore I would like to join you and become part of the economic development that makes the city safe, provides educational programs for youth, and employment opportunities for all.
Our next finalist is Jacqueline Gibson. Now, unfortunately, Ms. Gibson had to withdraw her name from the nomination. Not only is she a principal at one of our middle schools here in the city, she is also in her doctoral program, where she will receive, be receiving her doctorate by early 2025. Her dates, her days for classes are on Tuesday and Thursday. Tuesday, of course, is our city council meeting, and Thursday, every other week, we also have committee meetings. So because of the conflict and the fact that she believed she would be able to change those dates, because she has other members in this cohort with her, and they all agreed to change the dates, unfortunately Loyola would not accommodate, she wasn't able to change the dates and had to withdraw her name. So I'd like to give her a round of applause. Our next finalist is Anderson Lee. Let's give Anderson a round of applause.
Good evening. My name is Anderson Lee, and before I begin, I'd like to thank Mayor Irvin for even considering my application for this distinguished appointment. Likewise, I'd also like to thank Mr. Mohammed, whose timely updates in this process are also greatly appreciated. When you work with job seekers who've done all they can to better their situations, only to see them sometimes go unresponded to, it's heartbreaking. So, Mr. Mohammed, thank you as well for updating me, as well as the candidates throughout this process, as well as sharing the info on how to volunteer for the upcoming Back to School Bash at Martin Luther King Park on the twentieth. I'm happy to say I volunteered this afternoon to be part of the cleanup crew from four to seven. Although I am a twenty-year resident of Aurora, and it just dawned upon me, since I just turned fifty, I've now lived in the city forty percent of my adult life. I'm a relative newcomer to Ward Seven after being redistricted out of Ward Ten. That's fine, because when I look at the map of the ward, it's more me, it's home. Why do I think I could become a good steward and remotely even a successor to the late, great Alderwoman Shakita Hartburns is because I have a familiarity of all the ward's parts, at the same time, a learned understanding over time of those parts' different concerns. As a result, when I think about what kind of approach would I take to this role, it's real simple. My approach would be one of servant leadership, which I think would be in the spirit of Alderwoman Hartburns. When I met with Mayor Irvin last week, he asked me to describe several qualities that I would bring to this role, and I mentioned three, which I think are pretty simple. I'd be attentive, I'd be responsive, and last but not least, I'd be very transparent. In that spirit, I'd also like to thank Mr. Jacobs for patiently bearing with me last week so I could avoid any conflict interest between my current work and, of course, being, serving as older person for the city of Aurora. I embrace the council's mission. While I know that the needs of the residents have to come first, I also understand they go hand in hand with the needs of the business community. I too, like with several of the other candidates here, would like to see more economic development in Ward Seven, and I think that my past work in workforce development, community outreach in all parts of the city, grant management, being effective steward of state, federal funds, and finally, just being accountable, is why I think I could be a great representative of the city. So as I told Mayor Irvin, I have no agenda here but to serve. So with that said, I'm grateful for everyone's time this evening. I've been advised that you have a very busy agenda, and again, I'm grateful for the time here to be even considered for this honor.
Our last finalist is Brandon Tolliver. Let's give Brandon a round of applause.
Thank you, everybody. I'd like to thank the mayor, Rattley, city council members as well, and of course, the Alderwoman Mohammed. Little inside joke I have though, I've had no claim for years. So, let me, in a nutshell, simply put, why am I running for, why am I seeking this position for the appointment? It's very simple. I'm dedicated and I'm committed to the city of Aurora. I was born and raised in Aurora, on the west side, where I went to K through twelve, left briefly for a college stint at Northern Illinois University, and I came right back to Aurora. I purchased my first house almost four years ago in the George Town community in Ward Seven, where I currently live now. Essentially, what I've seen since living in Ward Seven is, I feel there's a need to shift the way that we communicate with those members. I feel like people tend to forget, because we're so far east, or so far southeast, that we're a part of Aurora as well. We may be DuPage County, we may be Naperville Township, but we're still a part of Aurora, and I feel like we need to bring everybody back into the fold, and I feel like I could do that. Secondly, another reason why I'll be running is simply just the service of the constituents of Ward Seven. In my current career as a construction underwriter, my job is simply, in a fancy way, is to look at multi-million, multi-billion dollar projects and figure out what's wrong, figure out how to mitigate the damages so I can reduce the exposures going across the board. That's the exact same approach that I would bring if I was honored enough to be the alderman of Ward Seven. Pretty much just, you got to respond to people, you got to get things done, you have to have resolutions, and you have to be able to foresee what could be an issue before it becomes an issue itself. I think I'm the right person for that job, and I would be honored to do it. Thank you so much.
Give Brandon a round of applause. As everyone can see, there are some very qualified people that are seeking this appointment in Ward Seven. And as I told all of them that we interviewed, all fourteen, which we came down to the seven finalists, we can only choose one. So over the next couple of weeks, we'll be making that determination of who that one person will be to fill this vacancy and to continue the legacy of Shakita Hartburns. But I want to thank all of you for, for being willing to put yourself out there, to stand up in front of this crowd of people, which isn't always an easy thing to do, and say that you want to serve and you want to be in a position to make a difference. So, thank you again, and I look forward to talking to you all at some point in the near future, and we appreciate you coming out tonight and sharing a little bit of your story with us and introducing yourself to our community. Let's give them all a round of applause. So right now, we get to the business portion of our agenda. So, yeah, I know we have a lot of folks that are here today for the, the community affairs presentation, the recognition, and the introduction to our finalists. Now, this meeting will probably go on a little bit longer than normal because we have a couple of public hearings, but I want to give everyone an opportunity at this point. Now, I'd like everyone that'd like to stay to stay, you know, to hear what, you know, how the city government works, but if you have to leave, I absolutely understand, and I'm going to give you a few minutes to file out if, if you've got someplace else to be.
You will step out to the hallway for group picture. Put them at the, can they?
Good to see you.
Thank you so much.
Everybody?
I appreciate it.
Go see Ken.
What do they think about us?
Do they think we're cool?
I don't know what they can't say.
You said?
Maybe go check, maybe go back.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
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 chambers if they choose to. Plenty of room. Is there anyone out in the hallway who wants to come have a seat? We've got plenty of space up here. Anybody else in the overflow that would like to come into the main chamber? Mr. Alexandria, anybody else out there looking to have a seat? Is there anyone else out there looking to have a seat in here before we get started? Appears that this is everyone from the overflow that is interested in having a seat. We're about to start our public comment portion of the agenda, Howard. Before we start our public comment, you know, I'll make a few remarks about and comments about our hearings tonight, which is what some of the public comment later is going to be about. You know, I want to make a statement regarding the hearings in general, but to correct some misinformation being disseminated in the community by a sitting member of this council. You know, and I will continue to use this platform to correct misinformation, clarify misleading details, and call out outright lies by the council and lies on the council and this administration. Tonight, there were two public hearings about creating two proposed TIFs. One of the Fox River Vine TIF and one for the cross-street tax TIF, tax increment financing, also TIF. You will hear from subject matter experts, experts who will provide you with the actual facts in a very transparent manner. Now, on Sunday, Alderman Lash hosted a meeting that he called TIF 101, which he offered his own opinions, his own misguided beliefs, misinformation, misleading details, and outright lies. You know, our staff has spent dozens of hours answering his questions, providing details and facts, and I am convinced that he's not asking for this information to make a more educated decision based on what, and based on what he did on Sunday and attempted to do last night, just last night at the West Aurora High School School Board District Meeting. There are so many things that are misleading and wrong. I could go on and on to counter so many of these things Alderman Lash said on Sunday and also just yesterday at the West Aurora. But for the sake of time, I won't even delve into his confused personal opinions about the subject. Let me just highlight four of the flawed points, his flawed points and lies, and provide you with the correct information. The Alderman asserted on Sunday, as he has done many times before, that TIFs are approved at this council because of specific developers who have donated to the Irvin for Mayor campaign. That is a lie. Developers donate to who they want and who they choose. As a matter of fact, the only reason Alderman Lash or anyone knows about any donations to my campaign or any donations that I give out from my campaign is because I file, I file the appropriate documents with the state of Illinois's election office, which is required by law, which means I'm following the law. TIFs are voted on in a public process through the committee structure openly and transparently. So this is an accusation against not just me, but everyone around this dais who has voted to move Aurora forward through economic development. Furthermore, our professional staff work hard when developers come to the table with the new viable ideas, those ideas that have not ever happened here in our community before, which is why we've done so much more in development in the six years this administration has been in office than ever in our history. They are not in communication with me, our employees, or anyone else about who donated, what in their decision process to bring a development before the council. Let's not insult the hard-working men. It's an insult. The hard-working men and women in our mayor's office of economic development or employees with any of our partners or any of our partners like Invest Aurora, which you have done on many occasions. There is no pay-to-play happening with our TIFs. If developers donate because they want to support a leader who is moving the city in a direction they want to be part of, that is their legal right. This is the legal right of a sitting alderman to donate as an individual to a sitting state senator who he also works for. Isn't that right, Alderman Lash? So would you call that pay-to-play or pay-to-employ? You know, the alderman wants, wanted to lead his audience to believe that developments like Muse and Redwood are the same as those that are gonna be discussed tonight and work because those were approved without TIFs. Again, that's not correct. The TIF Act of 1977 outlines exactly what those rules are for creating a TIF, and we must follow those rules to get a TIF approved. The Muse and Redwood are not in blighted areas. Blighted defined by the TIF Act, not by one alder, misguided alderman. Yeah, Muse and Redwood are not in areas with a deteriorated tax base as all these other developments that came, that were in the city were. The Muse and Redwood are not, are not developments in the areas that threatens public health and welfare. All those other developments that we've successfully done over the last six years are. They are not the same. Stop misleading the community. Mr. Lash also accused our team of misusing the code enforcement process to take over properties in our city. Again, lies. That is a direct implication and insult to another group of hard-working professionals, credentialed employees in code enforcement. They are not a part of some scheme, but they are part of a successful team working to raise the standards in Aurora across the board. Do you suggest that they disregard the blight in ruining Aurora? You know, I would normally ask my employees to come up before the council to explain themselves so that the alderman, you know, can accuse them to their faces, which he has never done. But they have already wasted enough time answering his questions only to be slapped with insults and accusations of mismanagement and misuse of their positions. And finally, I gotta say, the alderman purported that I pressure members of this council and to vote against their own conscience and against what they believe is right to vote on behalf of these TIFs and projects that are in question. So I guess I got two questions. First, Alderman, please raise your hands if I've ever pressured you as an alderman to change, or alderwoman, to change your decision, what you think, to vote in favor of a TIF or project. No hand is raised. Second, please raise your hand if you've ever, if you guys have ever accused staff, lied on staff, or spread false information for your own benefit like Alderman Lash. No hand is raised, except that second question, Alderman Lash, both of your hands should be raised. Stop the foolishness. Let's move to public comments and then on to the hearings where we will give the facts from those who know them best, not someone who pretends to know them to meet his own silly and confused agenda. Now, I do want to make one thing clear about those folks that signed up. There are two types of public hearings tonight. There's the, the public hearing, that public comment that we historically do, and I believe most people have signed up to speak on that one. And then there's gonna be another public comment specifically to the TIF hearings. So you have to decide which ones you want to speak at, the public comment or the TIF hearings. But at this point, Madam Clerk, will you read?
Can we speak at both?
At this, hold on a second. Do not, there will be no addressing any of these aldermen from the, from out there in the crowd. Everyone who signed up will get their opportunity to speak as they signed up. Madam Clerk, will you read the first public hearing comments, the rules of the public hearing comment?
Pursuant to the...
There is no, 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 no. Read the comments. If, and I would say this, we have our sergeant of arms here that we've already voted on. If people are disruptive to our, if these people are disruptive to these proceedings, they will be removed from the council. Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, do we have any members of public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Will you call the first speaker?
Steve Hendry.
Mr. Hendry, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
I spoke up because you said the first of public hearing. This is not the public hearing, which you just said it was, so please excuse yourself. And if you believe all the things that we just heard, I have a walkover bridge that you might be interested in that leads to nowhere in the future. It leads to Park District and it leads to private property. I did some, some of my own. I tried to look up some TIFs and to see how TIFs have performed, and what I found on the city's website is that there have been no reports since 2021. So what are you doing with all our money? How is it performing? How's your great deals working? I also can let everybody know that, of course, we wasted more money because Snow Island Social is gone. They fired all their employees, another lost cause. Maybe you should have dealt with the great person at El Tiro first, and you could have had his restaurant there instead of wasting all his money on New York Street. I also, in my checkings, went back through, because of my previous research into tax records, of the 448 parcels that the city owns, there's an incredible amount on the downtown area surrounded by, you know, maybe they might be in a TIF now, they might be in a TIF that's gonna expire soon, or they may be in a TIF in the future. Particular, there's like 31 and 33 Broadway, those both have businesses in them, so I guess that's being rented, city owns them. You have to forgive me, I really got riled up. I think I'm gonna have to stop and wait for the public hearing on the other things, and I'll speak again then, as I was told I could do by the clerk when I called.
Next speaker.
Adam Pauley.
Mr. Pauley, you have to, Mr. Speaker, beginning now.
Thanks. I have something positive today. I'm proud today to announce that I'm seeking the Republican nomination to be the next Kane County Recorder, which is the chief land records officer here in Kane County, and they also handle military discharges. Moving forward with that office, we're gonna be more hands-on. We are going to be working on creating a scholarship fund for young people who are interested in archiving and history and recording and assessing and things of that nature moving forward. We're gonna be holding regular town halls with constituents so that they understand what that office is and what it does, and most importantly, how its money is spent. And finally, we're going to work with our veterans. They handle the veterans' discharge certificates, and we're gonna work to join the veterans on a rewards program, which is a nationwide program that provides benefits to veterans at no cost to them. We're also going to work to put on our website resources for returning veterans on help with addiction and suicide prevention and workforce development and things of that nature. As, I've seen that too many times. I work at a gym overnight. The man who trained me to be a door-to-door salesman when I did that for a little while, he struggled with his rehabilitation into civilian life. And finally, what we're going to do is we are going to work to consolidate this office with the, with the county clerk as there's a lot of oversight, as there's a lot of overlap that exists. It will save the taxpayers a lot of money. I have, I have a sheet if anybody wants to see it. And in 88 other counties here in Illinois, including Cook County, they have consolidated the clerk and recorder. We can still move forward with these other programs because it will exist as a department under the county clerk and recorder. I'm tired of seeing our government become the most expensive nursing home. What I offer is bold, dynamic leadership to the people of our county, and I hope for your support. Thank you, and I yield the balance of my time.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Matthew Orr.
You have to, Mr. Speaker, beginning now.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. I am up here to talk about Snow Island Social, talked about it in 2019, came back in 2022? No, 2021, when they were awarded $300,000 and then eventually another $45,000 that ended up going towards paying their employees. I was a little bit disheartened with her. She kind of treated me like I was a kid, like I didn't understand how business works. And I was also disheartened to see when she put on Facebook, she didn't really announce she's closing, but it's permanently closed. She said she was gonna be giving out, you know, drinks and stuff for First Fridays. I was down there, it was a wonderful event, hundreds and possibly even 1,000-plus people there, you know, enjoying food trucks and getting out on the town. Her business was closed. She said she'd be open, it wasn't. She basically went out and said that Aurora still hasn't proven to be a place that draws those from outside the community as the city hopes. Even the Paramount's having difficulty filling its seats. No, it's not. The Paramount is filling its seats, and people do come from outside of the city of Aurora to come eat right here in Aurora. Personally, like myself, if I want to get a taco, I go to Taco or I go to El Tio. If I want a margarita, I go to La Quinta. If I want a fresh brew, I go to Two Brothers. If I want the best bowl of clam chowder here in the city of Aurora, I go to Tavern on Broadway. There's plenty of options here in the city of Aurora. Sullivan Steakhouse, downtown Naperville, they're open 11 to 12 hours a day, and they're making money. Why? Because they're open and they're committed to their business. Less than 30 hours a week is unacceptable. You're not going to make money if you're not open. I understand, she says, well, we make, you know, more money being closed. Well, you make nothing when you're closed. You're only accepting that you may not make money that day, and that's it. I think it's upsetting. It's one of the few deals, I will admit, has fell through here at City Council. It makes me think that with these future deals that we do end up making, we need to make sure that there's provisions and clauses in there to protect the city of Aurora taxpayers' money and, most importantly, the best interests of these properties when we hand out, you know, big amounts of money for businesses to come in. Looking at some of the current developments, like El Tiro's project and a lot of other ones, 80% of businesses close within the first five years. These businesses that can be established and show that they've been established and have good trust in them, these are the ones that succeed. These are the ones we need to bring in. I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you for listening.
Next speaker.
Helen Ratliff. Todd Van Olen.
Mr. Van Olen, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Now for something a little lighter. It's a Wonderful World of Ukuleles. Aurora Ukfest Number Six takes place August 19th. Doors open at 10:30. Workshops on Chicago blues, ensemble playing, beginner uke, Tin Pan Alley, and Beatles songs start at 11:00. Show off your talents on our open mic, then strum along with Uncle John. Mainstage performers include Todd Lawrence singing favorites of the 70s and the 80s, Milwaukee's own Two Ukes and a Bass, perennial favorites Hoa Peely and Hula Opalani, the, by now, very famous Hicks Brothers Ukulele Band, all-time standards by Aaron Behr, from Lansing, Michigan, the fabulous Heftones, the incomparable Little Rev, and backed by popular demand, the Ukulele Kings. Don't miss the closing jam session. We're raffling off three beautiful ukuleles. There'll be food trucks, street vendors, crafters, ukulele purveyors, puppies, kittens, and more. Here is Kathy Murphy, this theme song from our festival, "It's a Wonderful World."
I see trees of green, red roses too. I see them bloom for me and you, and I think to myself, what a wonderful world. I see skies of blue, clouds of white, the bright blessed day and the dark sacred night, and I think to myself, what a wonderful world. The colors of the rainbow so pretty in the sky are also on the faces of people going by. I see friends shaking hands saying, how do you do? They're really saying, I love you. I hear babies cry, I watch them grow. They'll learn much more than I'll ever know, and I think to myself, what a wonderful world. I think to myself, what a wonderful world. Hi, Carl.
Next, next speaker.
Mary Lee Lowe.
Next speaker.
Hi, Vimi Shuker.
No, she was here for Ward. Vimi, still present? Next speaker.
David Cannon.
Mr. Cannon, you have to, Mr. Speaker, beginning now.
Hi, everyone. My name is David Cannon. I'm Fifth Ward resident. I just wanted to spend my public comment today, I guess I'll start by expressing my embarrassment for your corrective, whatever that was, a few minutes ago where you were chastising an alderperson. I just feel like it's embarrassing and undemocratic, so just want to say that publicly. I feel like that's on lots of people's minds, so I would like to put it on the public record. So beyond that, I would like to speak about HelloFresh. Keep that on everyone's top of mind. Everyone should be knowing this is happening still. Factor HelloFresh, they have a plant on the far west side. There, there's still issues. I sent you all video last week, or I guess the week before last, of idling reefers beside the business that are still idling very loudly, putting toxic fumes into the air. We're still very concerned about the air quality. HelloFresh is attempting to mitigate all the other factors, so lighting, sound, you know, smell, those sorts of things. Those things remain to be seen if those are corrected or not, but they haven't put forward any real solutions to the air quality issue, which is the primary issue because that's health-related. So we're still waiting on, we would like a meeting, a public meeting with HelloFresh, like, reach out to the public, let's get one on the books. We don't want to wait anymore. So we would like that. I know that a wall has, they've taken down the old wall and are putting up a sound barrier. Kudos for them to actually have done that. I'm sad that it took public outcry for them to do that, but I'm glad that we've showed up and made that happen without the help of the current Fifth Ward alderman. So thank you for your time. Please stay on top of the HelloFresh factor thing. Like, you as a city allowed this to happen, like, please advocate for your citizens and make sure that they're taken care of. Like, this is about public health, this is about making sure that people's lives and livelihoods aren't ruined. So furthermore, we're a little concerned that the Restore has closed and that factor may also move into the Restore, you know, just further making the problems worse. So I guess that's about it. I yield my time.
Next speaker.
Frank Patterson.
I'd like to talk later at the public hearing.
Maria Gerato.
I'd like to do the same thing, too.
And Tony Stanford.
Mr. Stanford? No, nothing. He doesn't. Nothing else for public speakers? All right, then let's go on to the public hearing. Can you read the first item under the public hearing?
Twenty-three dash zero five six seven, public hearing regarding the creation of the proposed Rivervine Tax Increment Finance District and approval of the related redevelopment plan and project.
I call it the public hearing on the proposed Rivervine Tax Increment Finance District. This hearing is held as required by Section 5A of the Illinois Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act. Notice of the hearing was mailed and published in the newspaper.
Allocation Redevelopment Act. Notice of the hearing was mailed and published in the newspaper as required by law. The purpose of the hearing is for the City Council to consider the creation of the Rivervine TIFF District, and for the public to offer comments to the City Council about the creation of the TIFF District. If the meeting rooms are too small, we'll hold crowds, looks like we have enough room here to fit everyone that is interested in participating. The public hearing will start with a presentation by city staff and consultants, then move on to description of the Joint Review Board's review of the proposed TIFF District, then public comments, then questions and comments from the City Council, and finally, we will adjourn. Before the city staff and consultants begin their presentation, I want to spend a moment reviewing the extensive public notice and transparency followed by the city in getting to this point in creating the TIFF District. In February of 2023, the city published a newspaper, a notice announcing the proposed TIFF District. That month, the TIFF District was introduced to Finance Committee, the Committee of the Whole and City Council. All three of those introductions occurred on publicly posted agendas. In March 2023, the Finance Committee, Committee of the Whole, and the City Council, and the council approved an ordinance directing that the TIFF District be vetted by the Joint Review Board and at a public hearing again. That ordinance was listed on all three publicly posted agendas. In March, city staff mailed TIFF District notices to all affected taxing districts. The Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity to all residents addresses within 750 feet of the boundaries of a TIFF District, and to all parties on the city's TIFF interested, the TIFF unanimously recommended it to be approved. City staff will give more details on that meeting later during the hearing. In May and June, the Finance Committee, Committee of the Whole and Council, considered and the council approved. An ordinance resetting the public hearing to tonight. In June and July, city staff published notices of the public hearing and mailed notice to all taxpayers within the proposed TIFF District and to all parties on the TIFF Interested Party Registry. With that background on the record, I ask city staff and its consultants to now give the City Council an overview of the proposed TIFF District. The City Council and public should hold their comments until later in the hearing when they will have an opportunity to speak.
Staff.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council Trevor Dick, Assistant Director in the Mayor's Office of Economic Development. This presentation will be a combined effort of city staff as well as outside council and TIFF consultants. Our agenda includes the following. First, I'll provide an overview of what a TIFF is, how it works, and also its benefits. Next, I'll turn it over to Charles Dunham and Phil McKenna, who are both here from Ryan &amp; Company. They will present the background of the proposed TIFF redevelopment project and plan, the strategic objectives, a review of the qualifying factors, key elements of the TIFF plan, and finally, next steps. I'm going to start with just a little bit of what is a TIFF. I know a lot of the elected officials have seen this several times, but I think it's important to once again highlight what a TIFF is. It's an economic development tool that helps local governments improve blighted areas or jumpstart economically challenged areas. In order to become a TIFF District, an area must meet certain statutorily defined criteria. TIFF funds help municipalities to make needed improvements like new roads and sewers, provide incentives to attract private development and new businesses. TIFF helps to overcome the extraordinary costs that often prevent development and private investment from occurring, including the remediation of environmentally contaminated properties and investing in new infrastructure. Tax increment financing permits municipalities to assist in funding new investment without raising local property taxes. In certain areas, without TIFF, development may not be feasible. This image on the right shows graphically how a TIFF works. Basically, money for incentives comes from the growth in property tax revenues, which is called the tax increment. In a TIFF District, the property taxes resulting from increased value are all allocated to the city. Other jurisdictions continue to receive the property taxes generated by the base value of the properties in that district. All properties in the district are assessed in the same manner as all of the properties and taxed at the same rate. It's not an increase in taxes. It is only a reallocation of a portion of them to a special municipally-controlled fund for economic development purposes. There are multiple benefits for communities that utilize this tool, and I've listed here on the slide some of the short and long-term benefits. They include the fact that there are no tax increases. Blighted areas are improved. There is an increase in property values. Properties experience private investment and development. We can't forget about jobs. There are numerous construction and permanent jobs that are created with new developments. This results in a stronger, broader tax base. Over time, incremental revenue is reinvested in the TIFF District, and as the area improves, the TIFF stimulates investment outside of that TIFF District boundary. We feel it's important to also highlight that communities throughout the country use TIFF. Aurora definitely is not the only one. Since the first TIFF was established in California in 1952, TIFF has been used throughout the United States. Four of the seven leading states in the area, or, sorry, four of the seven leading states in the use of TIFF are Indiana, Minnesota, Wisconsin, and Illinois. This being the case, TIFF helps make Illinois communities like Aurora competitive with communities in the Midwest, as well as throughout the nation. I wanted to quickly highlight about Illinois specifically. Illinois established the use of TIFF over 40 years ago, and the city of Aurora has a long history of using TIFFs responsibly and very successfully for decades. We think it's important to also note that in Illinois, there are over 1,500 TIFF Districts and almost 550 municipalities. Nearby communities may or may not shock you, but TIFFs are being used in Naperville, Oswego, North Aurora Warrenville, Plainfield, Geneva, and St. Charles. Now that we've established a brief foundation and the importance of TIFF, I'd now like to turn the presentation over to Ryan &amp; Company, who provide an overview of the redevelopment project and plan.
Hi, my name is Phil McKenna, and I'm co-founder of a firm by the name of Kane McKenna Associates, which started a business over 40 years ago and was recently sold to Ryan. So, this is sort of a combination of Kane McKenna, Ryan, in terms of providing support for the staff and to the city in terms of economic development. One of the things that I was struck by in listening to all of the alderman candidates for the Seventh Ward is they all mentioned economic development. And one of the points to make about TIFF is that TIFF is an economic development technique. It's a tool. It's a tool in the toolbox, and it's a tool that can be used along with other tools as you go along and look at what the project, particular projects are. Our firm was originally formed in 1984, so we've had over 40 years' experience in working with not only TIFFs, but business improvement districts, special service areas, tax abatements, and Cook County Class 6, 7, 8, other techniques that might be helpful to spur economic development. One of the things that is really important to point out as chuckles into more detail on this is that we don't just throw a blanket out there and say this is a TIFF District. There are certain criteria, and this was referred to in the mayor's earlier remarks, there are certain criteria under the law that need to be met. Have we met TIFFs we don't like? Absolutely. We've told municipalities that. We've told municipalities that a TIFF they may want to form is too large a TIFF. It won't meet the statutory criteria. It's not only the statutory criteria as well. Is there really a need? Is there what we term in the industry a but-for? Is there evidence that but-for, the existence of a TIFF District and the public benefit that that can provide, that the project won't go forward? That's vetted throughout the whole process. We, in four years, we follow a process in which we do due diligence on every aspect of the plan. And I think as you walk through the process tonight that we've gone through, you'll see that that due diligence has been performed.
Thank you. My name is Chuck Dunham, also with Ryan &amp; Company, formerly Kane McKenna Associates. I worked for, with Phil McKenna, at Kane McKenna since 1989, so a long-term employee of the firm. So, I've been asked to focus on the redevelopment project area. As the mayor introduced, this is the Rivervine redevelopment project area or TIFF District. So, you hear us talk interchange between a TIFF District, redevelopment project area, they're both the same thing. The proposed TIFF District is located on the west bank of Fox River. On the north of the TIFF District is Park District property, to the south is Casino Home property, and to the west is North River Street. The TIFF District consists entirely of vacant property. Currently, it's a paved structure that's been used by a parking lot in the city for quite a few years. The existing use of that parking site as a parking lot has resulted in lost opportunities over the years. The existing condition of the site is restrain some of the potential growth for downtown Aurora. The current TIFF plan represents an opportunity for the city to turn it around. With the designation of the TIFF District, there is not to be put on the site a high intensity use residential project that would fit into strategic plans for the downtown master plan. It should also be mentioned that the TIFF District is currently a TIFF Number Five. Before the TIFF District is designated, it will be removed from that TIFF District. As I mentioned, there's been limited opportunities on this site, and that has been primarily because it has been vacant for a period of 40 years. During the 40 years, there's not been many proposals, as far as we can determine, approaching the city for redevelopment of the project like there currently is. And TIFF is a very important part of that. Trevor's now going to come back up to talk a little bit more about the specific project and how it fits into the master downtown plan.
Thank you, Charles. I just want to briefly talk about the proposed development that's part of this TIFF District. If you recall, back in February of 2022, council approved an RDA for this development. The project would not be possible if it was, because it meets the but-for clause for the TIFF incentive. The mixed-use project that's shown here on the screen is approximately 190 units. It includes an interior parking garage, rooftop amenities, ground floor retail, and public open space along the Fox River. There's been a lot of comments that have come in, and you've seen in the packet that was at your desk today, the written comments. A lot of the comments dealt with public open space along the Fox River. I think this graphic shows you what it is today. On the left-hand side, surface parking lot, the yellow is the proposed parcel. On the right, we've overlaid on that parcel the beige, which represents a new building. Along the north, in the darker brown, is a pedestrian plaza area. That area is an extension of Vine Street leading to the new pedestrian bridge. You can also see it takes a notch out at the base of the bridge. We've worked with ACA, the police and the fire department, to make sure that that pedestrian plaza is wide enough for visibility for safety, as well as stacking for concerts. If you've been to the River Edge Park shows in the summer, that is one of the main gates into the facility. Working with ACA, that plaza would be sufficient. You can also see on the east, along the river, between the existing Fox River Trail and the building is new open space. That new open space could include a sidewalk in the future or other amenities. And then you can see at the bottom, there's new sidewalks leading down to the Fox River Trail. So, I think it's important to show that this is it in context. You can see how it fits in with the extension of Wilder Park and the promenade with the new bridge, and continues the Fox River Trail in a rather large greenway, larger than it is today along the river. I'm now going to ask Chris Menick to say a few words about the specifics of the deal.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Trevor. Chris Menick, Chief Financial Officer for the city of Aurora. As Trevor mentioned previously, the business terms of this particular development that we've been reviewing for the past few slides were actually finalized in a redevelopment agreement, or RDA, that was approved unanimously by the City Council in February of 2022. That agreement actually required the city to begin the process of evaluation and potential implementation of a TIFF District related to the development. The entire project at that time was estimated to be approximately $54 million. On page 22 of the redevelopment plan and project, there's a table that's included in the report. This table lists TIFF eligible expenses and totals approximately $31 million. I think it's important to note, this table does not represent a project budget for the individual project that's before you or that we're discussing this evening. This is actually a high-level estimate of total potential TIFF eligible expenses that could occur over the entire 20-year life of the district. It's a common and prudent practice, when a TIFF District is established, to evaluate what additional projects, maintenance and capital projects, may be necessary over the life of the district. These amounts are then built into the table and approved as part of the redevelopment plan and project document that is in the packets. The money, the $31 million, is not owed to the developer, but it could be money that would be spent by the city or the developer and reimbursed to the developer on longer-term improvements in the district if those improvements and if those projects are approved by future city councils or through the normal procurement and budgetary process of the city. In reality, the city has covenanted and is obligated by the redevelopment agreement to do two things. One is to pay the $6.6 million in upfront costs or reimburse those to the developer, once the developer has documented expenditure of those funds. And secondly, to turn over or deed over to the developer the approximately 3.3 acres of city property that is called out in the redevelopment agreement. Those are the only two items that the city is currently obligated to do, and any future or additional expenditures would need to come back before the City Council for approval. The city will finance the $6.6 million in upfront costs, and these costs will ultimately be paid back with interest by the increment generated by the development. This is what's known as an upfront TIFF, where the city advances those costs and then is repaid by the increment generated by the development. So, and current projections do indicate that the city will recoup its entire $6.6 million investment with interest income applied as well. With the $6.6 million being provided by the city, this equates to approximately 12% of the entire value of the development. And again, that $6.6 million will be paid back with interest over time. Additionally, the developer is inputting 13% via a direct equity contribution of their own, and the remaining 75% of the cost of the project will be financed by a loan that the developer takes out and pays back on their own recognizance. The city is not involved in that second loan process. And it's also worthy of note that the percentage of incentive for this project, which again, will be repaid, is much lower than any other incentive packages that the city has entered into for downtown developments. At this point, I'd like to turn it back over to Trevor, who will go through some of the other facts related to the development. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. You mentioned the 20 years, and I think it's important to mention that. We do a lot of intergovernmental cooperation, work very transparently with our other taxing districts. A good example is this project. We've agreed to a 20-year TIFF District rather than a 23-year, 23-year TIFF District. The city in West Aurora School District 129 agreed that the Rivervine TIFF District, TIFF District, sorry, will end three years sooner. The city council will be presented with an ordinance enlisting the proposed TIFF plan to formalize the 20-year TIFF term in the coming weeks. And the city's commitment to shorten the term demonstrates our commitment to transparency and governmental cooperation and careful economic development planning. I wanted to talk about the four key project goals before I turn it back over to Charles to talk about eligibility. But what we're trying to do with this TIFF is to encourage development, to reduce or eliminate impediments to development, to coordinate redevelopment activities, and to further the goals and objectives of the city's comprehensive planning efforts. And I wanted to briefly touch upon the long-range planning efforts. There's been a lot of reinvestment in the downtown, but a lot of that is following plans that have been around for decades. There's been multiple long-range plans that have been done by different administrations over the years that involve public meetings, discussions, surveys, presentations of what the downtown should be. Residents desire more, and there are many plans that have been around for decades that illustrate that illustrate specific concepts for what the downtown could be for living, working, and recreating. I just want to briefly talk about this first plan. This one is from the Fox Walk/River Walk Plan that was created back in 2008. Different images here include the plan that clearly show the type of development being proposed on the site. You can see on the top, the image on the right on the top right, you can see a very similar development to what we're talking about today. Next is the 2004 Seize the Future Master Plan. That plan includes a Wilder Park neighborhood that shows a significant development on this site and includes the picture of this 10-story building, which supports the type of development that they desired at that time to go on this new neighborhood. The third and final graphic I wanted to show is the 2018 Master Plan for Downtown Aurora, which was adopted by council. That plan continues to support the vision for what redevelopment along the riverfront with mixed-use developments could look like. With that, I'm going to turn over to Charles to wrap up the presentation with the ACT compliance. Charles?
Thank you, Trevor. So I'd like to pick up what Trevor left off, and that is to explain some of the qualification factors that we found on the site on behalf of the city when we examined the property for TIF designation. First of all, it's important to point out, as the mayor did earlier, and as the Phil McKenna, there are strict guidelines under TIF Act that any TIF designation must meet. First and foremost, TIF plan must conform to a city's comprehensive plan, and in this case, it does. The proposed TIF district consists of contiguous parcels that are more than one and a half acres in size. The proposed TIF district meets more than necessary minimum criteria under the TIF Act for qualification for blighted vacant land. The BUT4 requirement has been met with respect to this TIF district. In fact, we recommend to the city that, in our opinion, BUT4, the TIF redevelopment of the area probably would not succeed without a TIF tax agreement financing. I think city staff is going to get into a little bit more detail about the GRB support and taxing support, but I will just summarize by saying that on April 2003, there was a meeting of the jury review board, and the jury review board unanimously supported the TIF decision recommended that the city proceed with the TIF designation. It's also important to note that the TIF plan, as it's constituted, will meet some very important strategic objectives of the city. For example, it's going to offer a strong potential for redevelopment of high-intensity use at a low-intensity site. It's going to allow the city to explore opportunities to activate unutilized spaces and connect those spaces with existing public open spaces throughout the downtown area. It's going to allow the city to reduce a surplus of land and return important piece of land to property tax status. It's going to allow the city some of the resources necessary to improve the aesthetics on the site and to integrate it better with the identity of the Aurora downtown, and as well as improve its relationship with surrounding neighborhoods and gateways into the city, most importantly, the riverfront. Now, I would like to move on to the qualifying factors for the TIF district. It's important to note in our examination, we found two sets of factors under the TIF Act that we believe the vacant property qualifies for. It's also important to note that the city only needs to find one of these factors to move ahead with this designation. So even though I'm going to talk about two, the city does not have to find both factors in order to proceed with the TIF district. The first set of factors, as outlined in the TIF Act, is a set of factors that involve six standards, and the TIF Act requires that the city finds that at least two of those six factors are in place. Those six factors are obsolete planning, diversification ownership, tax and special assessment delinquencies, environmental contamination, decline, equalized assess valuation, deterioration of adjacent properties. You see how I know this particular slide that we have two factors highlighted? One is obsolete planning, the other one is deterioration adjacent to the TIF district. These are the two factors, two standards that we think are in place for the TIF district. The second factor is a factor called blinded prior to becoming vacant. What that entails is recognition that before the site became vacant, there were structures on the parcel. And if you examine those parcels against the standards in the TIF Act, that there are sufficient factors to indicate that the area will qualify just on that factor alone. The TIF Act outlines 13 factors. Only five factors are required in order to designate the property for TIF designation. In examining the site, we found five: obsolescence, deterioration, excessive vacancy, lack of human planning, deteriorated land use and layout. Again, I would just point out that the city only needs to find one of those factors, even though we all learned two. The first factor I'd like to talk about is the two of six that I just spoke of on the previous slide. As I mentioned, there are two standards that we found. The first one is obsolete planning. Obsolete planning under the ACT are parcels limited or narrow size or configuration parcels of irregular size and shape that would be difficult to develop on a planned basis in a manner compatible with contemporary standards and requirements. Okay. Thanks. Sorry about that. Continue with the obsolete planning, or planning that failed to create right-of-ways for streets and alleys that create an inadequate right-of-way roof for streets and alleys, or public right-of-ways or that omitted easement for public utilities. Excellent. Throughout this presentation, we'll see images as I go along. Those images correspond with some of the factors that we found within the proposed TIF district. The original plant for this area was established about 150 years ago in the late 1880s. The market conditions, obviously, over a period of time have changed. Standards for development have changed, so that it's obvious that a plant created over 150 years ago is not suitable for modern development, least of all the developments being contemplated for the site. Additionally, the historically planted site had been in the past consolidated with property to the north that is now part of the park district property. So the site is now of a smaller size than when it was originally planted. At this outset, the site, he had several structures on it. The original use was an ice house. Since that time, there's been lumberyards, there's been warehouses, there's been storage facilities. Additionally, on the site, there were storages for all uses as well as coal storage. All of this stayed and exists until the site became vacant in the late 1960s. As we researched this property and researched this factor, we could not find any action that had been taken either while the structures were still in place or after the structures were demolished, which resulted in updating or modernizing the obsolete planning. So the planning that was in place in the 1880s is still there today, and that's one of the reasons we find obsolete planning. Again, that planning would not be sufficient or would be acceptable for the development that's being contemplated today. In fact, as we looked at the site, even under the standards of the original planning, it wouldn't bear up to the standards even with those structures that were on there. You can see, perhaps, it's a little bit small, but there were several structures that were located on the parcels over the years. In fact, even though it was a relatively small, widely-defined parcel, there were up to seven, nine, sometimes 10 structures on a very small parcel. Again, this is an indication of obsolete planning. In order for the project to proceed as being proposed, the planning must be updated. It must be updated so that it would meet modern requirements and that it would meet the standards necessary today with respect to the requirements of high-use residential property, which will include substantial build or access into the site. Next. Obviously, the site is at a critical location along the Fox River. The site designs will require that there be installation of special public features, there be made room for utilities, and other things necessary for the construction of a modern building. The obsolete plan that stands today is not adequate for that use. The functional use of the property will require a different planning system than you see represented on the map there. As you can see, it's an highly-shaped site that would not be suitable for high-use development without lots of modifications and lots of investments to make it suitable for redevelopment for the purposes being contemplated. Next slide. So to summarize, any development that's placed on any real estate project requires that we hold to a standard of highest and best use, and that would be a standard that would be in place at the time that the property is developed. The highest and best use of the property back in 1880s is different from what it would be today. So that points to the fact that the obsolete planning is a problem as it exists. Changes to technology, design, and economics play a role in what becomes the highest and best use for a property, and thus all the uses on that property become economically and functionally obsolete. Obsolescence has an adverse effect on the entire area, so elimination of obsolete planning with respect to redevelopment would be positive for the city. Additionally, the upgrading of the site to modern-day planning will eliminate the blinding factors that are present on the site today. Next slide. The second factor that we had under the two of six that I outlined earlier is deterioration that's adjacent to the proposed TIF site. Simply speaking, that just indicates that properties that are located adjacent to the site show signs of deterioration and decline. In this case, there are two properties that are in that condition that's adjacent to proposed TIF site. One is the former Fox River Hotel site at 306 River Street, and it is in deteriorated condition. Listed on the slide here are a number of factors that we in the city found in place that pointed to lots of components that were in deteriorated condition. That related to ceilings in the structure itself, walls in the structure itself. It related to exposed wiring in the property as well as broken light standards. There were rotten materials throughout the property. There was deteriorated factors related to window, broken windows, as you can see in the slide there. In essence, quite a laundry list of deteriorated factors related to that property. Next slide, please. The second of the two factors of evidence here relates to deterioration of the parking lot that's part of the consumer property to the south of the proposed TIF district. That property evidenced surface cracking, puddles, depressions, weak growth, new paving materials. These are all conditions that are specifically outlined in the TIF Act, which identifies site improvements that are consistent with deterioration. So to summarize, that was the two of six of the first set of factors that we found. Again, just from the city council's agreement that those two of six standards exist would be sufficient for the city council to proceed with the designation of the TIF district. However, in examining the TIF district, we also identified a second factor that was at play with respect to the proposed TIF district. And that relates to a standard called blinded before becoming vacant, which relates to the structures that were in place before the site became vacant. During our analysis, we examined a lot of historical information and anecdotal information talking with staff and some others around the community. Part of the analysis had to do with historical aerial photographs, maps that were on file with the city planning department, as well as many of the existing older plant maps that were still on file with the city. In examining these documents, we were able to find five factors that were identified as being present with the structures that were in place prior to their demolition. Recall that there are 13 factors in all. The TIF Act requires that we find five of the 13 factors being present in order to allow the city to designate the area as a TIF district. Next slide. Here you see a picture of a very good representation of what the site was like, probably in the 1950s. At the front of the pictures is the old cotton mills facility that was lost to fire in 1967. North of that is the subject TIF site with the yellow borders drawn around it. As you can see from the photos, although it's maybe hard to see, there were several structures on the TIF site, and all structures are what we're talking about when we talk about structures that were in place prior to the area becoming vacant. So with respect to the five factors that we found, the first was obsolescence. The Act states that obsolescence is the condition or process of falling into disuse or structures that have become ill-suited for their original use. We judge that the structures that were on that site, part of their demolition in the late 1960s, met both of these conditions. They had fallen into disuse, they were vacant by the time they were demolished, and additionally, they became ill-suited for their original purposes. By this time, the parcels were approximately years of age and therefore passed their useful life. Second factor that we found under this criteria was deterioration of structures of site improvements. Quite simply, because the structures were over eighty years of age, they were in all likelihood in very poor condition. One of the things we were able to do, looking at some of the areas, were to look at areas going back to 1946, 1963. In all those areas, you can at least see that the site improvements were in very deteriorated condition. Additionally, we would anticipate that the buildings were also in similar deteriorated condition at that time. So in the late 60s, the properties that were taken down, they were part of a lot of the industrial properties that were in Aurora and downtown. During the 70s and 80s, as industrial businesses declined throughout the nation, and so Aurora saw a share of that, these structures would have been representative of that era. The third factor that we identified with respect to this factor that is blinded before becoming vacant was excessive vacancies. The Act states that excessive vacancies is that finding that is characterized by the presence of unoccupied, unutilized buildings that represented adverse influence on the area. Again, by the time these structures were taken down, they would have been in poor condition. They would have been adjacent to residential areas, at least to the west of the property, and they would have and they would have been a blight from the side of those properties. And with respect to the demolition, they would have been well-found at the time to take those down to eliminate safety factors. And at that point, the buildings would have been beyond any suitable reuse. Next line, please. The fourth factor we found was a factor called lack of community planning. According to the Act, lack of community planning is an area that suffers from a lack of community planning if the area was developed prior to or without benefit of a community plan. Again, I will restate that the properties were developed starting in 1980s. Obviously, at that time, there was no modern-day community planning tools in place. In fact, the city's community planning started in 1950s, upped it in 1984. So quite simply, these parcels developed literally without a community plan in place. Finally, next line. We find a factor that's cited in the Act called deteriorous land use and layout. The TIF factor addresses deteriorious layout as the existence of incompatible land uses relationships, buildings occupied by inappropriate mixed uses, or uses considered to be notious, offensive, or unsuitable for surrounding area. Again, the proposed TIF site at the time the buildings were in place were located in a close proximity to residential areas. They would have been unsuitable for residents living in those areas. Additionally, would have been industrial lands that would have been associated with site conditions and disuse by the 50s and 60s. The lumberyard would have been attracting truck traffic in and out. That would have been a great disturbance to the residential properties located adjacent to the area. Next line. So to summarize, that was the second factor that we found, and again, that factor in and of itself would be sufficient for the city council to proceed with the designation of a TIF district. Next, I'd like to talk about some key elements of the TIF plan itself, starting with the Bufford Standard. Again, without a TIF district, we believe that this property would not be redeveloped in coordination with the city's plan for the site. The site is now vacant and unutilized. With the proposed development, the TIF site would result in a residential commercial mixed-use project that would be in conformance with the city's downtown master plan. Earlier, we stated that the TIF plan has a budget of $31 million. Again, that's a maximum budget. The city does not have to consume that whole budget, but it is meant to give the city lots of flexibility of the life of the TIF. The current site is a zero EAV, so the basic EAV will be $0. And by the time the TIF district ends in twenty years, we anticipate they would have an equalized assessed valuation of $25 million. Trump, you were going to wrap up. Common steps?
Sure. Is this the JRB you're going to go into, or is this?
This is just the final side of this presentation, Mayor. Yeah, so just the next steps, that city council will consider adoption of the ordinances, officially creating the TIF district, and that the city council will consider adoption of the ordinances removing the new TIF district from the existing TIF district number five and reducing the term of the TIF district down from 23 years to 20. And that concludes our presentation.
I now ask the city staff to provide the city council with information about the joint review board proceedings for the TIF district and describe what the joint review board is. Who is that?
Thank you very much, Mayor. As part of the process of creating the TIF district, a joint review board meeting was held on April 6, 2023. Prior to the meeting, notice was posted both at City Hall and at the Aurora Fire Museum where the meeting was held, and notice the meeting was mailed as required by law. Members of the JRB are representatives from other taxing districts impacted by the creation of the TIF district. At the conclusion of the meeting on April 6, the JRB unanimously recommended that the city council create the TIF district with a vote of six in favor and zero against. Votes in favor of creating the TIF district were cast by West Aurora School District 121, oh, sorry, 129, Lebonzi Community College District 516, Aurora Public Library District, the Fox Valley Park District, the city, and the public member. Votes in favor by these taxing districts means that each found that the TIF district met the requirements of the TIF Act and that it would be appropriate for the city to create the TIF district. If the TIF district is created, the JRB will meet annually to review its effectiveness.
All right, now it's time for the public comment regarding the proposed TIF district. The city received written comments regarding the TIF district, and those comments were distributed to the city council. If members of the public wish to comment tonight, please come to the podium, state your name, and make your comments be known. Please limit the length of your comments to a reasonable period of time so that all who wish to speak have an opportunity to do so. Is there an individual that wishes to speak on the public comment? Will you approach? Madam, state your name.
Thank you. My name is Charlotte Dillon, and I'm speaking for myself and my husband, Robert, who couldn't be here. So we have been in Aurora for 46 years, and we are totally opposed to the TIF law. We believe it was ill-conceived by the state government and also by our Aurora council. So I have three points. The first is my husband, who's a mathematician. He says a little back-of-the-envelope calculation shows that with 183 units, about 7,000 per unit, per year of taxes, is necessary to pay the TIF. That would seem to leave almost nothing for the city and other taxation agencies for the life of the TIF. If the developer requires this TIF in order to build the condos, we believe it is a bad idea. The developer should be able to make a profit on the sale of the condos, and if that is not going to happen, what advantage to the city is there for subsidizing the development at this point? The city needs housing for those with average incomes, not high-end developments. The city needs more access to the riverfront, not less. This development should stand on its own or not stand at all. Secondly, and I haven't heard this mentioned at all, from a psychosocial perspective, our task is to raise our young people to be equipped, to have resources, and to step into adulthood with the capacities to find meaningful work and relationships. If we have lived into adulthood well, we are called to be generative now, not 20 years from now, preparing the next generation to step into their lives. What kind of message does it give to our young people if we are siphoning off funds from schools and libraries and other public resources to fund a project like this one? And then, thirdly, we want to live in areas that have green space. The river view access belongs to all, not just the developer. Thank you.
Is there any else that is interested in speaking? Thank you very much, ma'am. Is there anyone else that's interested in speaking? Will you approach and state your name?
Hi, my name is Helen Rassell. I live at 508 Binder Street in Aurora. So Chicago is often called one of the most beautiful cities in the world, but that wouldn't be the case if they had not decided to preserve the lakefront for the people. So my major objection to the Rivervine TIF is an objection to this kind of development on the riverfront. We must preserve the riverfront for the public, for green space, for outdoor recreation now, or it'll be lost to us forever. If the attendance at the recent Fox Overlay District Open House is any indication, the people of Aurora want the riverfront to be parkland. My second objection to this project is that the developer also happens to have given tens of thousands of dollars in campaign donations. Maybe this is a coincidence, but the appearance is one of corruption. I'm a precinct committee person who knocks on doors to get out the vote, and I can tell you that this is a widespread perception that sullies both the receiver of the funds and those who look the other way. The architectural renderings of the Riverwind Fall group shows a development extending all the way south to Penny Street. The Rivervine TIF only covers about one-third of their plan. So my third objection is that when the casino finally moves, this developer will be coming back for more land giveaways and incentives and an even bigger TIF. My last objection is admittedly mundane but potentially far-reaching. The footbridge with the high median wall was built for crowd control of people entering the river edge from the very parking lot that this plan will give away. Building on this parking lot will cause attendance and scheduling problems for this venue that's already struggling to make a profit. Cars that would have parked there will park elsewhere, causing a rippling effect of parking problems everywhere. Then if this project gets the go-ahead and they construct the first apartment complex, the new residents will be parking where? In the casino lot, no doubt. And this will affect parking for the casino, the New York street diners, parade and festival goers, as well as river edge attendees, a problem which will once again spread out into the surrounding streets. If you make parking too big a problem, people may come once to dine or attend an event, but they may not return if it's just too big a hassle. This project is too big and in the wrong place. And while the parking lot is not the most lovely vista for the riverfront, the removing of this parking area to build high-density housing will cause problems, which I'm not sure the council and staff have thought through. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during this hearing? Please approach and state your name.
My name is Mary Lelou. I'm an Aurora resident, and I am here to implore you as our representatives to vote against this particular TIF. I am all for economic development, and as the first individual mentioned, Charlotte, that if this is such a great prosperous thing to do, this developer should be able to do it on their own. We should not take money and reappropriate it from our schools, our infrastructure, and other areas to go into a developer pocket. It feels like the casino again and more. And if anybody's ever done a project at home, you know that if you plan on $1,000 to remodel something, you're spending $1,500. It will not stop at this level. And our tax dollars should not be reappropriated to these places. We want to keep these areas for our children to go down to get onto the river if they want and not take away the parking, as Helen mentioned. I implore you to reconsider using the TIF and come up with a better solution to use this land.
Any other speakers during this hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Well, we have other speakers. State your name.
My name is David Cannon. I am a proud resident of Aurora's fifth ward. I come for you today to address the complex and costly matter of the proposed Rivervine TIF. Under this proposal, our city is yet again poised to give a staggering $31 million in land and tax incentives to a private developer under the guise of economic development. I ask you not to rubber stamp this deal without first critically examining some facts. This agreement is not only unnecessary but also unsustainable. The area proposed for this development likely does not meet the criteria for blight as stipulated in the Illinois statute. This is prime real estate and riverfront property, a valuable asset that we should not be giving away, along with millions in tax incentives. We just built that bridge that will connect this property directly to transit to Chicago that is priceless. So imagine playing Monopoly and watching the bank hand over valuable properties like Broadway and Park Place to a single wealthy player free of charge while also taxing the other players to build their hotels and houses. That is the analogy I have. Almost all residential developments within our city have happened without the need for massive public subsidy, communities like Redwood and The Muse. Our current examples of similar developments going up without TIFs or other city incentives, they are 100% privately funded. Curiously, as far as I know, they're also going on without political donations from the developer and contractors. That said, we must address the blatant corruption in this city. The current administration led by Mayor Irvin has been dogged by allegations of pay-to-play practices. Developers who are awarded TIF and grant funds by the city return the favor through campaign donations, while our hard-earned public dollars are spent recklessly. The man behind Rivervine Development, Eddie Nye, and his associates have donated over $46,000 to Mayor Irvin. The people behind the Cross Street Development, Harish and Jay, donated over $67,000 to Irvin and his related PAC. Pay-to-play must end in this city. Otherwise, we, the citizens, will pay the price in the long run while the rich further line their pockets. Local governments must reject the practice of enriching the already wealthy. We cannot perpetuate a system that takes from the poor and gives to the rich like a reverse Robin Hood. The likes of Ryan LLC, the consulting firm that the city used to vet this project, openly admits on their website that they are liberating their clients from the burden of being overtaxed. In this case, their clients are private corporations. They seek to funnel resources from our local governments, school districts, libraries, and park districts into the pockets of developers. I'm sure they're very good at what they do, but I don't think they're our friends. The Aurora City Council should do the right thing and make a stand for responsible development and ethical governance. The Rivervine TIF proposal should be rejected. Instead, let us embrace sustainable growth that uplifts our entire community, not just a select few. It's time to put an end to the culture of corruption that undermines the trust of our citizens. In closing, I'm not against all TIFs. I am, however, opposed to TIFs that siphon millions of dollars of public funds into the coffers of private companies, leading to unnecessary hikes in our property taxes. We can develop responsibly in a way that benefits all of us. The time has come to steer our city in a direction that reflects our values and secures a prosperous future for every resident of Aurora. And I just say, like, let's put a for-sale sign on this thing. Do that first, see what happens. Thank you.
Are there any additional speakers for the hearing? Any additional speakers?
Hi. My name is Maria De La Jurado, previous fourth ward resident, now second ward resident due to address change. I am asking for the city council to please reconsider this TIF. I understand that they came up here with great value facts, and the presentation was wonderful and great and all, but the fact of the matter is the people in our community are struggling, struggling to make ends meet, struggling to even pay an apartment. With my situation, I was recently evicted from my place. I have no place to go with my daughter, nowhere at all. Where is the affordable housing coming from? A studio average is like $1,000 per month, maybe even $12,000 depending on the area you're looking at, and it's not getting any better by that. Two bedrooms and three bedrooms, or maybe even one bedroom, is ridiculously out of the range. You guys talk about wanting to create a community that's about inclusion and about everyone in it. You guys have that opportunity to be able to prove to the people that you are listening. We are telling you despite what are facts or what's not facts, the fact of the matter is the people of the community out here speaking are saying that we don't want this. We don't want you to just give them a loan or forgive them on some sort of thing that's telling them, "Oh, yeah, you can come building here, and then we're going to get back the tax loan within 20 years." Right now, in my situation and many other people who are facing the same economic problems here, is that we can't wait 20 years, two years, not even one, not even three or six months down the lines. We need something to be cost-affordable and effective now. I came up here years ago speaking on behalf of my students when they were at fear of their lives because of what immigration was coming in and deciding to try to take their parents because they didn't have that. I'm up here now speaking behalf on everybody, not just by students that I helped counsel throughout my entire years of my transportation business. I'm here to talk about everyone in this community that needs to be able to feel safe, that they could be able to live here without worrying about where are they going to sleep in the next two, three months. The Hesit House is overflowing. It's hard to get in there, especially if people have pets as their families, because unfortunately, people do have their cats and their dogs that they had to consider, and that's why there's a lot of people who are homeless, is because we don't have programs that offer that for the entire family. I'm asking that the council please reconsider the fact that this is not a great idea, and if they really want to build here, then they should be able to pay it up on their own.
Any additional speakers? Additional speakers for the hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Before we close the public hearing, I want to give the alderman an opportunity to speak as well. I will now move on to questions and comments from the city council. The alderman, you have the floor. Does anyone like to speak? Alderman? Ed Buck, Alderman Buck?
Yeah, I guess I will start. So I just have some general questions. So of course, we'll... So of course, we're looking at this space. A lot of people talked about leaving it open, green space. I understand that. A mall for open, green spaces. We have, I mean, overall, the Fox River in Aurora and really most river towns is underutilized. We have all kinds of space, Jason Prisco Center, and, you know, those are things we need to work out with the Park District over time. We need to better utilize the Fox River. This one project will not stop people from going to the Fox River. But what I want to look at with this, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Mintz, just because, not because of your financial expertise, but because you used to work for the city of St. Charles. And so my question is, because someone mentioned Chicago, Chicago is not equivalent to Aurora. We all know that Chicago built numerous towers along the Chicago River, so Marina Towers, Presidential Towers, so that is not a good comparison. But tell me about either St. Charles or other river cities. Do they have any housing developments along their riverfront, Elgin, St. Charles? Do any of the others? I don't, you know, I don't know. So I'm asking your expertise for working there and whatever knowledge you have.
That is correct, Alderman Buck. The short answer is yes. There is a lot of development and residential or commercial development along the riverfront in river towns. In St. Charles specifically, I'm gonna speak to St. Charles because that's where I have the most experience. There is a development that's known as the First Street Project that was begun probably in the early 2000s. The construction on that particular development is essentially wrapping up, as I recall, but it consists of various commercial properties and various residential properties on the west bank of the river, just south of Route 64 in St. Charles. That was accomplished through TIF financing. Coincidentally, or not coincidentally, there was an assemblage of property that occurred in the early 2000s and subsequent construction that continued up until 2008. 2008, there was a pause for a number of years while the economy recovered, but it has since come back online, and there are some condominiums that are in one building along the river, and I believe, if memory serves, there are like three or four mixed-use buildings right along the river. But that's probably the development that I have the most familiarity with, you know, from my prior experience. So it is common, I guess, to have riverfront development occur within the community. Additionally, in addition to the riverfront development, they recently went through, and there was development on the east side of the river to put in some new restaurant facilities, and I believe there are a couple apartments as well that are associated with the buildings on the east side of the river. A lot of that has been completed since I left and joined the city of Aurora.
Thank you.
Anything else, Alderman Buck?
Not at this time.
Any other aldermen wish to comment?
One comment, I just wanted to... During public, thank you. During public comment, somebody had mentioned parking being an issue. I just want to refresh my memory, this parking included with this project, right?
Correct.
I just want to clarify that. Thank you so much.
Alderman, Alderman Smith?
Just to add to the cities with waterfronts and TIFs, one of the most successful streets in the city of Naperville, now if you want to call that a river or whatever you want to call that, little stream that goes through Naperville, but they call it a river, is Water Street, and the entire street of Water Street, including the Indigo Hotel, is a TIF project. We also would bring to mind that just last year, the city of Naperville tiffed an entire parking lot on North Aurora that they're turning into a promenade. So what's more frustrating to me today as I sit here, this has become bigger than the TIF for this particular project. This has become one of our fellow aldermen who has taken a stand against the entire City Council to say that all TIFs are bad. This is what's frustrating to me. This is why we had to get this education today, TIF 101. One of the first things I did when I became an alderman was to educate myself on a TIF, what a TIF was, how it benefits the city. And if we stop and look, one of the candidates today said, I wrote it down, he said, Aurora today is not the Aurora of 50 years ago. And he's right. But Aurora today is not the Aurora of eight years ago. And if we stop and think of the work that we have done that involves TIFs, that involves our old buildings, our blighted buildings that have not been used for 40, 50, some over 100 years, that are now on the tax rolls because we were able to use TIFs, we have to look at the positive use of TIFs. Quite frankly, I'm sick and tired of sitting here and having one alderman call all of us liars, call all of us out, tell all of us what we're doing is wrong. And I'm sick and tired of kowtowing to that alderman. You get your act together, you learn the details, we've tried to educate you over and over and over again what a responsible TIF is, but you continue to ignore. Because you know what? If you want to vote against a TIF, go ahead, but stop wasting our time and taxpayers' money to do so. Thank you.
Alderman Zell?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to follow up a little bit on Alderman Buck's comments about the riverfront development. Obviously, I think many of you know that I started my career at the Fox Valley Park District. I actually helped build the trail that would be in front of this development, and the Park District has been very aggressive over the years to preserve open space. But I was kind of, it's a little tug at the heartstrings to think that we would lose open space, but I was very happy to see the presentation tonight, which shows additional open space from this development that is gonna provide an additional buffer, and that trail will be preserved. And I'm not gonna comment about TIFs. I think that discussion is kind of moot at this point for me, because we've had the greatest success with TIFs at the Premium Mall at Mall of virtually any TIF in the state of Illinois, if not the region. So, but I do appreciate Alderman Buck's comment, and I appreciate that additional open space was added to this project.
Mayor Irvin?
Alderman Nice? Thank you. I'm gonna have a few questions at the end of this, but I want to make my statements. There's been some things said here tonight which I'm not gonna respond to. I do want to at least acknowledge that the mayor did not attend the meeting that I held on Sunday, but there were staff members there, and they did bring a videotape. They did not shoot video, but apparently they took notes, and some of those comments may have been taken out of context when the notes made it back to the third floor. I do, and I have done my best to work with staff so I cannot misrepresent the numbers. And in all of my presentations, I've used the numbers that are in the RPA, with the exception perhaps of not understanding the 6.6 million and how we're gonna refund that. I also did write after meeting with members of the Economic Development Team, an email on July 7th, I believe, and checked with Rich today. I sent it through Rich to staff and did not receive an answer back. And the nature of the email and the nature of that meeting was trying to identify the math problem of the economic need to close the gap. So I don't know what the mathematician who did the back-of-the-envelope math, but I don't want to work with back-of-the-envelope math. I want to know how much this developer's gonna make off of those apartments. And this is gonna be true with all of the economic developments or incentives that we push. I want to see the actual numbers, and I want to see the math problem. To me, it's not an art and a science, it's a math problem. And if I can be convinced that this can't be done without development or without incentives, and it's something that's good, I'm not against all TIFs. I would like to see us refocus our TIFs so we require and bring better-paying jobs here. I'm not in favor of tiffing apartments. I'm not in favor of tiffing low-income jobs, but if we're to get a decent-sized manufacturer or something that can produce living wage jobs, I'm gonna be in favor of that. And I actually said this while on the school board, Trevor Dick and some of the members of Economic Development came, and I said that back in 2017, 2018, whenever you guys visited District 131, that this is what I would like to see happen. And I feel like this is what's missing from the piece. I mean, we continue to support some of our restaurants and buildings. On this specific TIF, I feel this is not an old building, and I do want to go through the point-by-point. My reflections, having read the RPA and Ryan's arguments. I attended the JRB, so starting there was a slightly different presentation where I think Mr. Durham said the proposed TIF district consists of an area that is entirely vacant. It's an existing parking lot that has been unutilized by the city for several decades for that purpose, and that's simply not true. It's getting used every time we have a concert at River Edge Park. It's getting used for Kris Kinnell Marketplace, which has been a positive economic experience for our downtown area, and I want to continue to see that be supported, and I want to make sure that those people have a place to park when they come to our downtown area. But I've read the TIF eligibility report, and I want to focus my comments there. I definitely have some concerns. The TIF Act has certain requirements, as you've heard here today, before a TIF district can be created. In this process, there's no judge and jury unless it goes to court, which means that it's the responsibility of this council to weigh the merits of the TIF eligibility study. So first, just to address the obsolete plating. On page 13, Ryan points out and uses a section of the TIF Act called obsolete plating in their argument by itself, "The study or parcels are irregular in both size, shape, and is not readily suitable for the high-density mixed use in our residential development." Yet, the plating, the sample plating presented at the end looks identical almost to the one that exists in the most recent version, and then they go back to 1888 Platts to make this case. But I don't feel like plating is a barrier to development. The Planning and Zoning Commission and the council can quickly and easily change the plating to accommodate the needs of any developer. Just two weeks ago, we voted to change the plating for the Public Works Building, combining two Platts so traffic can enter the facility on New York Street. Adjacent deterioration. On page 14, Ryan says that the casino parking lot and the multi-unit property at 305 River Street are both adjacent and facing deterioration. While 305 River Street, and this is about the only part of their report that I slightly agree with, property has some signs of deterioration. The report argues that the casino parking lot has surface cracks, potholes, depressions, weed growth, loose paving materials. I walked the entire thing, and I'm not sure when you took a look at it, but I don't see any of that. I did see one weed. There's surface cracks, but that's not abnormal to any parking lot in the entire city. So I just feel like that needs to be struck entirely. And also, just as both these problems, 305 River Street and the casino, this is what property standards is for, and I'm not sure if this is what was misheard about the presentation, but I did ask, and we'll continue to see what sighting we did do, but that's how we handle these initially blighted areas and minor changes that need to be made to properties or parking lots as they get sighted, and then there's a whole process to bring them up to speed. Additionally, I want to point out that the Ryan report fails to mention recent improvements adjacent to the RPA, the addition of the pedestrian walkbridge, the recent improvements to Wilder Park. In fact, these are some of the reasons that, according to Trevor Dick in the initial February 2003 finance meeting, mentions as the reason that there is multiple developer interest in this property. So the minor deteriorations or complete absence of deterioration are not a barrier to development and should not be considered as we think about approving or disapproving this TIF. And then the blighted area immediately prior to becoming vacant is definitely the biggest stretch that I've seen in the entire TIF report, and I'm not a TIF attorney, I think everybody knows that. But on page 15, they basically, and you saw it here tonight, using pictures from 1963 or 1972 as justification, zooming in on overhead photographs presumably taken by an airplane because they didn't have drones back then of this TIF district, and say, well, it was blighted way back then, and so therefore, we should consider it for blight now. And to that end, I think I've already made the point pretty clear that we use this parking lot for Rivers Edge Park, Kris Kinnell Marketplace, First Fridays, people go fishing, people who use a bike traco, people wanna go to Wilder Park, and suggesting that overhead photographs from 50 years ago are somehow rationale for well-maintained parking lot blighted is more than just a strat, it's a blatant misuse of the TIF Act and complete nutter nonsense. Third, I think you need to listen carefully to what you've been told throughout this. We have to weigh, is this a blighted area or is this prime real estate? The purpose of the TIF is to address blighted areas that people do not want to develop or build on. During a discussion about buying the bank property on La Salle Street for 1.6 million, Alex Manella with the Economic Development said that this was prime real estate, and I agree. Riverfront property is more valuable, and there's very little pulling down the property value of this location. In fact, the property value of the EAB of the homes, the multi-units on the block of River Street all went up over the last several years and continue to climb. We're going through a period of inflation, so I think you're gonna see elevated EAB, and you probably won't see that used in many TIF arguments anywhere in the state of Illinois. The but-for clause, so when the Rivervine TIF was first discussed at the finance meeting during the February of 2023, Trevor Dick told the committee that there was lots of developer interest in this location because of the new walkbridge. So we have prime riverfront property with a new park and a new walkbridge, and it sounds pretty appealing, yet we never put this property on the market, we never put a for-sale sign, we haven't listed a Realtor that I'm aware of. I did ask these questions, and I want to say it was around May, and Trevor Dick said that there was interest but no documentation of it. And then, you know, how do we know that we need a TIF district if we've never put this property on the market? During that same February finance meeting, Alderman Franco, Alderman Jenkins, and Alderman Bade all made the argument for looking closer and using other development tools, other financial incentives, and while those were discussed, we haven't even tried that. So if we haven't tried selling it to a developer and we haven't tried pursuing other incentives, why are we so locked into this TIF district? So these are just some of the technical problems that I found with Ryan's report. I look forward to hearing them respond, but I do have several questions. I don't want to monopolize the time. If people have other questions, I'd be happy to let somebody else take a turn, but I can start in right now if everybody's okay with that.
What do you say, you have questions for?
Sure, just for staff. I mean, one of them was the...
Same questions that you've been asking staff over and over again? Those questions?
No, just a few real quick to pin down some numbers.
Go ahead.
Is, I mean, are you asking them to respond to your last comments?
No, no, but I did want to find out just the process. I think we talked about it a little bit...
What process are we talking about, brother?
Sorry. The 20, so the next process for this is it'll go back to finance, and then to, you said this is currently written as a 23-year TIF that will rewrite as a 20-year TIF, correct?
Mr. Mintz?
Yes, I believe that the ordinance to bring the TIF district timeframe term to 20 years will be on Finance Committee this Thursday. Is that correct, Trev?
Yes, sir. There's the schedule.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and then that will work its way through the process. So, and the reason that's necessary is, the base is a 23-year TIF under the TIF Act, and because we're doing something a little different, in the spirit of intergovernmental cooperation with the school district and reducing the term, we do need to make that change formally.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other intergovernmental agreements with the school district on this? I know when the JRB took place, there were none.
Intergovernmental agreements with regard to this particular TIF?
Correct.
There are none.
Okay, great. And then the second question I had was about the expenditure, right? So this is a micro TIF, which means it's drawn pretty much around this building.
Correct.
And that means that the money that goes into the tax increment into the TIF fund can't be used outside of that TIF district, correct?
It has to provide, any expenditure of TIF funds has to provide benefit to the TIF district. There are instances... There are instances where you can utilize, but the outside of the TIF district, but the general rule is you need to use it within the confines of the TIF district.
Okay, so for the most part, unless there's-
Okay, it does, I am hearing that the TIF district does go all the way to the river, and it goes all the way to the far side of the right of way for River Street? River Street.
Okay.
So there could be streetscape improvements or improvements along the riverfront is the upshot of that as part of those TIF expenditures. But again, as I mentioned during my part of the presentation, any additional expenditure of TIF funds, other than what we've already committed to via the RDA that was approved a year and a half ago, would require council action. So we would need to, we would need to make you aware of those, bring those forward.
Good, thank you. And then, but for the majority, right, the $31 million is going to stay there, and to reimburse the developer for future costs is articulated in the RDA.
And keep in mind, as was mentioned during the presentation, that doesn't obligate us to spend $31 million. If there are no TIF eligible projects that arise during that timeframe, at that particular point in time, the money would remain in the TIF district or in the TIF fund.
Okay, and then it would be reimbursed, redistributed to the taxing bodies? That's, sometimes that's what-
If it were, if at the close of the TIF district there were surplus funds remaining, then yes, they get distributed back to the overlapping tax districts proportionate to their tax bill. And again, the council makes a determination to close a TIF district as well. We just went through that process with TIF 1. We're going to go through it here in the next couple of months with TIF number 3.
Now, did we do with TIF 1, we refunded monies back to the taxing bodies in TIF 1, is that correct?
Actually, those, with TIF 1, there was no surplus distribution back to the communities there. The increased EAV is what went on to the tax bills just recently.
The increment, the increment.
Yes. The incremental value went back into the value of those particular districts.
All right, thank you very much, Alderman.
Alderman Bog? Just to follow to what you just said, who requested that we reduce this from 23 to 20 years?
I believe it was the school district that, the school district.
That's what they said.
Okay, specifically? Who at the school district?
I don't personally know that.
Administration.
Yeah, it was Administration, Alderman Bog.
Okay, did the board vote on it?
It was a discussion that we had with Miss Angie Smith. With all the school districts, we speak to them to tell them about the proposed TIFs, get their input. With discussions with Angie, she really wanted us to reduce the TIF deadline from, or the TIF limit from 23 to 20, and then so we followed through with her request. It still works financially and shows some great transparency and cooperation.
Do you know if the school board has to vote on that?
No, I don't believe they do, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, one last question before we move on to the next.
I have, I just want to make a comment. So, you know, I'm listening to the professionals talk about TIFs and the math and the data and the obligations and responsibilities. I hear others talk about what-ifs, maybes, speculation, why can we do this? But I'll tell you what's really happened, and you made a good point about this last meeting, Mr. Mayor. 50, 60 years, we didn't do any of this. No incentives, no TIFs, none of that, and nothing got done. So when we talk about reality and facts, that's a fact, that's a fact. Nothing in the city happened because we didn't take initiatives like these TIFs. And then we employ the professionals to help us do this, to put these things back in the tax rolls, to create synergy downtown, to have people in 190 units spending money to keep the tax rate down. I think we're missing the big picture here. Those are the facts of what's really happening, and I think we can't overlook that. You know, we could talk about, well, did we put this on the market, we do this? I don't know. And I do know this, if we didn't do it, do we wait another 50 years and say, you know, you know, we should have done in 20, in 2023, we should have made a TIF out of that? Don, why did we do that? Why didn't they do that 50 years ago on the riverfront? This is what we're talking about today. Talking about not doing something as opposed to doing something that's appropriate, legal, responsible, and it's good for the community. So, you know, we could speculate all we want. We see what happens when we do nothing. And I think doing something over the last six to eight years has really made a difference to this community. So I just think that we need to look at that as we go forward. It really has made a difference.
All right, I'll close.
Mr. Mayor?
All right, you've already had an opportunity to speak. I'll close this out, there'll be another TIF, you can speak at the next TIF, which will be in a few minutes. I'll close this out on this one, on this one here. Hold on, before we motion to close, there's been a motion, there's been a motion second, but let me get some final words, and I need to just clarify the understanding of a TIF. The questions from the audience is, you know, why are we spending our tax dollars on these developments? We could use this money for, you know, for other things, for poor people, for, you know, other types of housing. And my question is, and it's not really a question, it's just a statement I'm going to ask in a question form, what money? The money don't exist. Right now, there is no value, no tax dollars coming from that property on the River Street at all, other than people parking on it for free. There's no value on it all. The money that we're talking about only happens, only exists if this development is built. Once the development is built, they create a value. They just get a portion of their value back. No building, no value. It's as simple as that. And we see that it's been working, as Alderman Franco pointed out, because we've added a billion dollars to our EAV to the city since we've started doing this economic development. We've reduced our tax rate by 16% since we started doing all this development. It's working, you know, and people may disagree with it and think, you know, this isn't how I would like to do it, you know? Everybody's got an opinion. But what this administration doing with the support of these, this city council has been working for the city of Aurora. What for the development? There is no increment, there is no value. It stays flat because the city owns it and it's not worth anything to the taxpayers other than parking on the riverfront. This will give us something to be proud of, and the park district property is going to be wide open right next door to the north of it, and there'll be other park district property and open space all up and down the river, as well as the open space that'll be included in this particular development. So it's about value. There is no money to talk about without the development, there just isn't. And we, we've been here for six years in this administration. You have no idea how many developers and REITs, real estate investment groups we've had meetings with that said, heck no, I'm not coming to Aurora because you're not ready, I'm not going to invest our money in this city. We've heard that over and over and over again. We had to search high and low for developers that recognize the future potential of this city and were willing to invest in us. So then the question is, if we're asking developers to invest tens of millions of dollars in us, shouldn't we be willing to invest in ourselves? Now, we haven't since the 1960s, when the, when this, when these old factories were knocked down and they were closed 10 decades before that, we haven't invested ourselves, and look what happened. We hadn't invested ourselves, you know, at the Hobbs Building that sat empty for 50 years, now it's full apartments. We didn't invest in ourselves for 70 years with the Terminal Building, but we did this administration, now it's full. You know, and I thank you for pointing out that we've got things like Kris Kendall Market in the city of Aurora. Guess what, this administration brought it here. I appreciate you pointing out that we've improved, that the Wilder Park has improved. It didn't happen by itself, this administration improved, you know? And all the development that you see, it's come from this administration because we recognize what we've got to do if we're going to move Aurora to the next level. Otherwise, I guess the option is do nothing, because that's what's been happening for decades and decades and decades, longer than most of us in this room have been alive. No, we're not going to continue with that. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to go forward, and we're going to make sure that we, that we grow, that we grow this city, and we're going to do it responsibly as we have been doing, with the help of our professionals as we have been doing. And we're going to listen to them over someone who's just guessing and asking questions about what ifs this and what if that. Having heard from the public and the city council, I'll run to most to close the public hearing, there's been a motion to second already. Alderman, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Alderman Yanis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no.
The hearing is adjourned. Madam Clerk, will you read the next public hearing item?
23-0568, Public Hearing Regarding the Creation of the Proposed Cross-Street Tax Increment Finance District and Approval of the Related Redevelopment Plan and Project.
My call to order the public hearing on the proposed cross-street tax increment finance district. This hearing is held as required by Section 5A of the Illinois Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act. Notice of the hearing was mailed and published in the newspaper as required by law. The purpose of the hearing is for the city council to consider the creation of the cross-street TIF district and for the public to offer comments to the city council about the creation of a TIF district. If, I think we're good with the meeting not being overrun, public hearing will start with the presentation by the city staff and the consultants, then move on to a description of the joint review board to review the proposed TIF district and public comment and questions and comments from the city council, and finally, we will adjourn. Before the city staff and consultants begin their presentation, I want to spend a moment reviewing the extensive public notices and transparency followed by the city in getting to this point in creating the TIF district. In April 2023, the city published a newspaper notice announcing the proposed TIF district. That month, the TIF district was introduced to the finance committee and the city council in May. All three of those introductions occurred on public posted agendas. In May of 2023, the finance committee, and in June, the committee of the whole and the city council considered, and the council approved, an ordinance directing that the TIF district to be vetted by the joint review board and at a public hearing. Again, that ordinance was listed on all three public posted agendas. In June, city staff mailed TIF district notices to all affected TIF districts, the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity to all residential addresses with 750 feet of the boundaries of the TIF district and to all parties on the city's TIF Interested Parties Registry. In July, the joint review board held its meeting and unanimously recommended it be approved. City staff will give more detail on that meeting later during the hearing. In July, the finance committee, committee of the whole and city council, considered and the council approved, an ordinance setting the public hearing to tonight, and in June, I'm sorry, a public hearing setting it for tonight. In June and July, city staff published notices of the public hearing and mailed notices to all taxpayers than tax proposed TIF district and all parties on the TIF Interested Parties Registry. With that background and the record, I ask the city staff and the consultants to now give the city council an overview of the proposed TIF district. City council and public should hold their comments until later in the hearing when they will have the opportunity to speak. City staff and consultants, overview please.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Once again, Trevor Dick, Assistant Director of the Mayor's Office of Economic Development. This is very similar to the previous agenda item. This present will be a combined effort of city staff as well as outside council and TIF consultants. But for the interest of time, I think we've really spent a lot of time time about what a TIF is and the TIF background, if it's okay with council, I'd like to skip forward to the Ryan and Company presentation, which focuses more on the eligibility requirements for this TIF district.
That's fine.
With that, I'm going to turn over to Charles for Ryan and Company.
Okay. Do you want me to do this for you again?
Could you please?
Yep.
A lot more fluid that way. In the spirit of things, I'm not going to go through and read the definitions that I did before, many of the factors that I cited with respect in the previous Rivervine TIF district are implied here, so I'll spare you that. First line up, you see the proposed TIF district. This is a TIF district that's located at the intersection of South River Street and Cross. On the west of the parcel is New Avenue, and to the, to the south would be Gale Street except the TIF does not extend all the way south to Gale Street. Okay, similar to the previous presentation, this is a little bit of the opposite. This TIF district is entirely approved property. It contains older structures. It's been a site that's been targeted by the city for quite a while without success in the past, but now the city is in a position to make the project move. The potential redevelopment of the properties have been hindered by certain natural conditions on the site, which relates back to some of the conditions cited under the TIF Act. Again, because of the factors in place, there have been opportunities that's been denied to the city to move development for this site. This particular proposal just before the city is now going to move it toward residential commercial redevelopment, but could only take place with the help of the TIF district. Would also mention that this TIF district is located in TIF number 3. It's my understanding that TIF is coming to an end at the end of the year. At any rate, the proposed TIF district will be taken out of that TIF district upon designation of the new TIF district. The key factors that work at this particular site, next line, please. Oh, this is a little bit about redevelopment project. Trevor, do you want to, maybe just brief through this? Okay. Yes, this is the renovation of the 110 Cross Street, which is driving the current time total for the TIF district. Again, the city council did an interior redevelopment agreement back in March 2023. The only reason the city council did so was that the development could not go forth but for TIF incentives. The project itself is supposed to be a mixed-use project with 15 residential units on upper floors, a brewery, restaurant on the ground floor, and what's needed improved parking facilities on site.
Thank you. As, as mentioned on the previous slide, the business terms of the agreement for this particular development were the subject of a redevelopment agreement that was approved unanimously by the city council in March of 2023. The project cost at that time was estimated to be approximately $5.5 million. As discussed, in the redevelopment plan and project document, page 22 does outline total TIF eligible expenses of approximately $9.9 million. As with the prior slide, this is a high level, or excuse me, the prior public hearing, this is a high-level estimate of potential TIF eligible costs that may occur over the entire 23-year life of the TIF district. In terms of the salient business agreements, or business terms, the redevelopment agreement, the city of Aurora has agreed to pay the developer $375,000 in TIF eligible construction costs through a city forgivable loan. This loan is only distributed based on performance, and the distributions occur at various milestones throughout the development process. Additionally, the developer is going to put in $1.25 million in its own equity, obtain a loan of $1.7 million, and sell tax credits in the amount of $1.7 million as well. Additionally, with regard to this particular TIF district, this TIF would require the developer and the city split the incremental property tax revenue on a 70%, 30% basis. The city is repaid for the forgivable loan plus interest through the incremental property tax revenue, the city's 30% retention of the incremental revenue. The developer is reimbursed for documented renovation costs through its share of the TIF reimbursement. 70% of the TIF distributions on an annual basis up to a maximum of $1.6 million. If there is residual increment above the $1.6 million over the life of the TIF, the residual is retained in the TIF fund by the city and may be used for future improvements with additional city council approval. Thank you.
Once again, the TIF is designed to meet the primary goals of the city in the following respects. It would encourage the redevelopment of Asian, interunified structures along South River Road. It would eliminate impediments that have existed to date that has prevented the project's redevelopment or extracting private development. The redevelopment would be consistent with other downtown Aurora redevelopment projects. It would encourage investors to invest, perceive an investment in those structures, thereby saving and preserving them and removing the danger for future removal of those structures. Additionally, the TIF would follow the goals and objectives of the city's overall planning Again, just to repeat something we said on the other site, this TIF also conforms with the requirements of the TIF Act. It conforms with the city's comprehensive plan. The site consists of continuous parcels that exceed one and a half acres. The TIF district is being proposed as a conservation area as opposed to a platted area, and we identify more than a minimum of another- area, and we identify more than a minimum of criteria to meet that standard. The but-for requirement has been met with respect to this Tiff District. In that, without the Tiff District development would not proceed. Next. Okay, I think staff is going to talk a little bit about the summary of the Joint Review Board, so I'll skip that slide. Again, there are strategic city objectives being met by implementation of the Tiff District the city council choose to go forward. First and foremost, redevelopment of this site would promote a higher and better use. Ironically, in this case, it would be a lower intensity use than what used to be there when industrial development years ago, so the more conformist of what downtown is today. It would allow the city to explore opportunities to open up spaces and integrate those spaces with other open spaces in the downtown area. This Tiff District would result in the preservation of older structures that run into the fabric of the history of downtown Aurora. Should be noted that these structures, for the most part, were constructed from 1921 to 1929, so they're quite old and therefore worth preserving, we think. The Tiff District would result in improving aesthetics of the area, which is readily seen from some of the photographs you may see during this presentation, which indicates some of the detriments and appearance of the buildings today. So as I mentioned, with respect to this Tiff District, we were pursuant it as a conservation area as opposed to a blighted area. Conservation area is different. First of all, conservation area, there's a threshold requirement that at least 50% of the structures must be 35 years of age or older. Obviously, with the age of these buildings, we exceeded that very easily. As a result of that on the conservation area, the Tiff Act requires that we need to find at least three of the same 13 factors that we talked about in the previous presentation. On this slide is a list of all 13 factors. I'm just going to highlight the six that we found and then talk briefly about those six. We found obsolescence, deterioration, excessive vacancies, excessive land use coverage, deteriorated land use and layout, and lack of community planning, again. Okay, in this case, the definition of obsolescence is very easy. The buildings are there, they're not gone, so we don't have to look backwards to wonder about the level of obsolescence. The buildings are quite old, again, built, started in 1921 to 1929 for the most part. Before this redevelopment proposal, the buildings had essentially become mostly vacant. They have become ill, suited for their original purposes, which were industrial originally. They have been significantly underutilized for the last several years. These are factors and fact that it would cost a great bill of money to retrofit them and make them suitable for modern development. All goes toward a fine and obsolete planning, obsolescence, I'm sorry. Next is deterioration. I think some of the photographs speaks for themselves with respect to the level of deterioration of the buildings and of the site improvements. There's obvious deteriorations on the structures and site improvements, so I won't belabor that, but we'll be open to questions about that later. Obsolescence, excessive vacancies, again, is somewhat self-evident with respect to these properties. The properties have had long periods for the most part of being vacant, either totally vacant or underutilized. That in and of itself would be sufficient to qualify this factor under the Tiff Act. Excessive land coverage and overcrowded structures and community facilities, that factor goes to the fact that if you go to this site and visit it, you will notice that on a parcel there are multiple buildings on each parcel, excuse me. That creates overcrowded conditions, which would be not suitable for development in today's modern development standards. The other part of these properties is there is little room with respect to being a land ratios, there's very little room for developers or private investors to put in things like parking and other suited facilities that will service the facility. So Tiff can help the city address that with developers by providing some of the solutions. A dollar serious land use and layout is one that we talked about in the last public hearing. Again, I won't read the definition. In this case, it goes to the fact that you have, again, older structures, you have pretty intense building construction on limited land. The off-street parking would not be sufficient for the original uses, which were industrial. It could be made retrofitted to, there used to be a plan with limited residential and limited commercial use. The off-street parking solutions of a lower intensity would not be solvable by the city by itself due to investment of off-street parking. Therefore, the land use for this particular property needs to be less intense than in the past, and that's the factor that mostly leads to us including this as a criteria for Tiff qualification. Again, we talked about lack of community planning during the other presentation. It's the same situation here. You have structures that are very old, built in the 1920s. They were built without the benefit of community planning, without the benefit of modern development standards. Therefore, we made a finding that they would not be suitable for the original use, which were industrial. If they were being developed today as someone proposed industrial, we think in all likelihood this city council probably would not entertain that very well. So with respect to this, more development that does fit within the community plan and plan for the downtown area fits well with the master plan for downtown. With respect to key elements of the Tiff plan, again, to be a little redundant, the development would not go forward but for Tiff assistance, so we think that is demonstrated by the plan and by the nature of the redevelopment agreement that the city has with the developer. Again, these are older buildings, vacant, unproductive. With this development, they would be converted to a mixed-use development, which would fit in very well with the rest of downtown. Chris already talked about the budget being $9.9 million, so I won't elaborate on that. The base EAV for this Tiff site is $261,000 based on tax year 2022. We estimate modestly that at the end of the Tiff life, the EAV will be approximately $2 million. And I would just say on behalf of Trevor that the next steps would be the ordinance before the city council to consider the designation of the Tiff District as well as an ordinance to take the existing property out of the Tiff District Number Three.
Thank you very much, Charles. That concludes our presentation, Mayor.
I'll now ask the city staff to provide the city council with information about the Joint Review Board proceeding for the Tiff District.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the process of creating the Tiff District, a Joint Review Board meeting was held on July 7th, 2023. Prior to the meeting, notice was posted both at City Hall and at the Development Services Center where the meeting was held, and notice of the meeting was mailed as required by law. Members of the JRB are representatives from certain taxing districts impacted by the creation of the Tiff District. At the conclusion of the meeting on July 7th, the JRB unanimously recommended that the city council create the Tiff District with a vote of seven in favor and zero against. Votes in favor of creating the Tiff District were cast by King County, Aurora Township, Wobonzie Community College, District 516, Aurora Public Library District, Fox Valley Park District, the city, and the public member. Votes in favor of these taxing districts means that each found that the Tiff District met the requirements of the Tiff Act and that it would be appropriate for the city to create the Tiff District. If the Tiff District is created, the JRB will meet annually to review its effectiveness.
All right, it's time for the public comment regarding the proposed Tiff District. The city reviewed written comments regarding the Tiff District, and those comments were distributed to the city council. Members of the public wish to comment tonight, please come to the podium, state your name and make your comments. Please limit the length of your comments to a reasonable period of time so that all that wish to speak have an opportunity to do so. Is there anyone from the public that would wish to speak on this issue? Approach the microphone and state your name.
Hello. Again, my name is Mary Le Lou, Aurora resident, and I am concerned about this particular Tiff, not in the sense that this area isn't undesirable and vacant and something needs to be done and developed there. However, my personal opinion is this area is much more blighted than it is conservation, where the last one was considered a blighted area, and I think we could agree the riverfront has a little bit more conservation aspect to it. So this particular one, under my understanding from the JRB meeting, that this will only provide 15 units. Is that correct?
Correct.
For housing? And market value is shared at 190 to 195 per square foot? So each of these units in that area is going to be approximately $2,000 a month? $2,400, depending on your unit? My point is, this isn't addressing the housing issue in the area if we're putting in 190 mixed-use units nearby as well. So for both of these Tiffs, one or the other, if you wanted to pass this one, I also don't feel like it's going to hit the people of your city. I don't feel like it's going to meet that need. So again, I would urge you to reconsider this Tiff and, along with the prior Tiff, put a four sales lineup for six months. I'm sure there's a Realtor that'd be happy to get the commission off of any price that was offered. Thank you.
Is anyone else who would like to speak? This, public comment, sorry, when you post and state your name.
So for everybody who went to high school, we all learned about, oh, Adam Pauley, private citizen this time. For everybody who went to high school, we all learned about Keynesian economics, especially in regards to the New Deal. The country wasn't properly functioning as an economy, and we primed the pump in order to stimulate private spending. That required some public spending in order to do that. The definition, according to Investopedia, priming the pump assumes that the economy must be primed to function properly once again. For more than 70 years, the Aurora economy has not been properly functioning, and now we finally have a plan in order to get that going again. It requires some priming the pump in order to get that public or that private spending going. That's what we've got going on here. We've had investors tell us no, and now they're telling us yes, because we are willing to prime the pump and accommodate them a little bit. Those people and those residences will be able to live here and spend their money in these new businesses, and all it takes is a little bit of priming the pump and a little bit of long-range planning, just like they did back in the 30s. We're doing that here on a smaller scale, and I look forward to it.
Are there any speakers that wish to speak at this hearing? Any other speakers? All right, this time, since there's no other speakers, from the public that wish to speak, I will ask if there are any comments or questions from the city council. Are there any city council members that want to speak in the public hearing on this particular issue?
I have a couple of quick questions. What is the approximate percent of affordable housing that we have in the city of Aurora?
Oh, thank you, Tony. About 15 to 20% citywide is what we estimated at that time. It was about a year and a half ago.
And then what is approximately the percent of low-income housing do we have?
I'm just trying to remember off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
David, do you remember?
No, okay, and I'm sorry, don't mean to put you on the spot. The point being that the city of Aurora has, does its due diligence with both our affordable housing and low-income housing, because we do want to take care of the diversity in our city. So bringing forward these projects is not at all neglecting our housing, and the only reason why I ask that is because it is important that we bring this up every now and again because folks believe that we are neglecting our housing market, and we're not. We are doing what we need to do to provide the people of Aurora the housing needs that they have.
Alderman, that's a great point, and I think while I was sitting in the audience listening to some of the comments, I instantly thought of the recent examples of new affordable housing that were approved by this council over the last several years. Think of Lincoln and Todd, Copley, there's a lot of existing affordable housing in the downtown right now. Think of the Artisan Lofts, I mean, I could go on and on. So there is a lot of affordable housing, particularly in the downtown, and it's something that's always on our mind, and we want to make sure that we have a lot of housing opportunities available to our residents.
Thank you. And then another, more of a statement and followed by a question. The EAV for this particular property right now is $261, is currently?
Yeah.
And then I missed the slide as it went by me. Once the project is considered, is complete, what would the EAV?
We're estimating $2 million.
What, excuse me, what did you say?
We're estimating $2 million.
Say that louder. How much?
Into the microphone.
That costs $9.9 million.
Yeah, we're estimating that the EAV would be approximately $2 million. That's a modest estimate.
Thank you, sir. That's all my questions.
We're going to be giving in the next couple of weeks, maybe a couple of months, a little bit more detail on this affordable housing, but just, we just said Todd and Lincoln. The city supported that at a $3.5 million and produced 50-some-odd units, about $80,000 per unit. This is a $375,000 was the original incentive, less the $75,000 of foreign exchange, it's $300,000, $20,000 a unit. So we've, in that example, we've supported to, because to build a, to do a renovation is an expensive thing, whether you're doing it affordable or you're doing it market, and we are going to make a presentation in a couple of weeks just about the gap, so you'll understand it in a little bit more detail. But just that example of what, and the Tiff itself over 23 years, if you look at the RDA is capped at $1,606,000, am I right there? Over a 23-year period, so that's the amount, the maximum amount that could come out of that. So the city is really supporting affordable housing and market and trying to find, what the administration is trying to do is trying to find the right blend.
Any other questions or comments from Alderman Dunne?
Thank you, Mayor. We focused a lot on this one, on the Enduro Building, and, but as I look at the map, there's, well, there's also Enduro, and there's like four or five other buildings. Obviously, they would be within that Tiff and be eligible for Tiff funding. Have we seen any plans or is that future?
They would be eligible for Tiff assistance in the future to the extent they approach the city for that. I don't believe there's any current plans for those.
This might be an example of no good deed goes unpunished, because if you, we're doing micro Tiffs to try to limit the Tiff with the hope that the value spreads so you don't have to do a Tiff for the buildings next door. That's the hope, so you're trying not, what the old administrations were doing were tiffing large swaths of land. You look at Tiff One, Tiff Three, this administration's not doing it. Looking at it one by one, seeing how it is, seeing those values go up, and hopefully that spreads out. So right now, there is no plan other than this very specific.
So right now, there is no plan other than this very specific micro TIF.
Thank you.
Any other Alderman want to make a comment or question?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Lesh?
Sure. I have a few questions on this one. During the finance meeting discussion on this topic, it was mentioned that work had begun on the Brew Pub. Do we know if we released any funds out of TIF District 3 to support that initiative, or are they entirely funded by the developer?
There have been no TIF funds released from TIF 3 in support of that effort.
Okay. And then a second question is, it sounds like the primary property that is blighted, and I agree that there's blight, there is 110 Cross Street, but I noticed that the TIF area covered another property owned by Harish, the Enduro Roastery. Why didn't we just cut that out and micro TIF around 110 Cross Street? Why? That building has a tenant, and we could, in theory, take it off, put it back on the tax rolls next year.
I'll let Mr. Dick handle that.
Thank you. So when we're looking at the boundaries of the TIF district and we use a lot of resources, look at the current facilities, we always call it the smell test, I think is a good way to put it. It has to meet a certain acreage, as we've talked about in the presentations. So the minimum acreage had to be met, as well as that Enduro building still had some issues with it. If you notice on the boundary, we do not include the warehouse 251, no, 251? Companies, thank you. 251 Company, we do not include that, because that's a recently renovated refurbished beautiful building, and that is not part of the TIF district.
Okay, thank you. An follow-up question. As I looked at this, you know, one of my main concerns was actually, I just wanted to bring this forward, and there may be an answer for it, but the, is the reliability of the developer himself? And I bring this up because during that same meeting, they presented that they would be receiving roughly $2.3 million on the Hobbs Building to begin construction of three restaurants, and the timeline and schedule for those was to begin in May, June, July, and August. They had both a fast track and a slow track, and yet none of those construction projects have begun. I don't know if we've dispersed the resources out of, and I know that's a separate TIF, but to the reliability of the developer on this. I'm just curious why that project has been delayed, and have we dispersed the funds for that project?
No, we haven't dispersed the funds on that project, and that is the developer that successfully redeveloped the Hobbs. So in terms of track record, they've done that. In terms of the timing, it is delayed by about two months, supply chain issues regarding the, first of all, that's not, the incentive there is not in a TIF, okay? That is a different incentive. It's not a TIF incentive that we talked about. Does that, do you understand that? Is that clear? Can I?
Sorry, for--
So the incentive there for the restaurants was not part of a TIF.
Okay, that won't be repaid by the TIF that is around that building?
No, there was an incentive in the original building that was covered by the TIF, so I just wanted to make sure, because you weren't here at the time.
Yeah, I did kind of hear the details, and I have questions of whether he'll be able to repay a million dollars off of food and beverage.
But there were funds dispersed, not from the TIF, but--
Okay, so we did give him money, he hasn't started construction yet.
He has ordered the equipment. It was like a six-month delay to get the equipment, so in order to help do that--
As well as issues with the historical, the historical community here in the state of Illinois, that had, number of issues had to be addressed because of the historical building. They'd delayed a lot of that stuff. But the question is, that Alderman Lesh is asking, let's just get to that, does he have the capacity to complete 110 Cross? That's the only question we need to answer.
We, the answer is absolutely, we understand their net worth, we've looked at their financials, we looked at their bank records, and the answer is yes.
Sure. Okay, I'm just asking because we had the recent--
Do you have another question?
Well, I am going to take just a minute to respond to some of the other comments that have been made. With respect to affordable housing, this is in addition to bringing living wage jobs here, Chicago, which does over TIF without question, but they do allocate some of their money to affordable housing initiatives, or they have requirements within some of the apartment buildings, so there are more affordable housing in those units. I'm completely aware that Ward 8 might be one of the more affluent parts of the city, but I can assure you, having knocked on doors across this city, that there is a growing need for people to be able to find living space, especially during inflation, and everybody's feeling it, the developers are feeling it, we're feeling it. But it's a growing, it's a growing need. So I'm interested, I'm sure we'll hear something from the report, but the reality is, is there's still a lot of people that are struggling to find a house that they can affordably live in. And then with respect to Alderman Franco, you brought up that, you know, that this is the first, there's two key differences I see. One is the micro TIFs, but TIF 1 did generate $50 million. Somebody mentioned the Artisan Lofts received a lot of TIF funds. So there have been funds at work here for the past 30-some years. What we're doing, what the approach going with the micro TIFs is that, one, we're borrowing, we're lending them the money upfront to get it instead of it used to wait in that TIF district and then be dispersed, but it's a little bit different approach. I guess the other big piece of that is that all of the money that gets diverted from our schools goes into that one development project or gets locked into that one space that can't be spread around, so.
Let me reflect on that. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, because we have the experts here tonight, because I want to, I want to make this clear, because everybody keeps talking about this. If you do nothing, and you're, this is, and I'll throw out a number, because I think it's better when we have an example. If an area's generating $5,000 in property taxes and we do nothing, for 40, 50, 60 years, it's going to be $5,000. If you create a TIF, you're still going to get your $5,000 for 20 years, and then it gets bigger. So I don't, I think people understand, we're not taking money away, we're just not giving the unrealized money to them yet, but they're going to get it, you know, tenfold when we do it. So they're still getting what they're going to get. We're not taking any money away, we're just creating value for the future for them, looking at their future. So I think people need to understand, we're never taking money away. It's not like we're generating 5,000, we create a TIF, and now you get nothing. You're still going to get your 5,000, but in 20 years or 23 years, whatever the case may be, according to the plans that we've done a lot of successful TIFs, it will be a lot more money. So I don't, I think people have to understand, we're never taking away money from anybody. We're basically setting the future, and if we don't meet the criteria for the TIF, it's a blighted area, it's a moot point anyway. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that. I think most people do, but we keep bringing it up, we're not taking money away. That's just the wrong narrative, and I take umbrage with that, because we keep saying it, but it's definitely not true. We have the experts here, they're going to tell you, it's exactly not true. So I don't know why we keep talking about that. That needs to be shelved, because we're not taking money away from anybody.
I don't think, I don't think it's a "we" thing, it's, 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 Alderman doesn't understand, but everybody's had an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, but Alderman Franco cut me off there.
Hold on a second. Everybody's had an opportunity to speak. You're having her publicly-- I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. There's been a motion-- Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. Madam clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Dunell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lesh?
So much for civility, yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes, for sure.
Ten yes, zero no.
All right, the hearing is hereby adjourned. All right, next we will, still both hear the, both the consent agenda and the direct-to-council consent agenda in full. Would the clerk now please read both consent agendas in full?
230390, resolution authorizing standard and associates as the provider for services of pre-employment psychological assessments through December 31st, 2023. 230454, resolution authorizing the annual maintenance renewal for VMware server software used by the city of Aurora through CDW Government Vernon Hills in the amount of $64,037.12. 230459, a resolution authorizing the execution of a service agreement between the city of Aurora and Family Services Association of Elgin, Illinois in support of the Aurora Police Department Crisis Intervention Unit. 230511, a resolution authorizing the purchase of two 5,000-gallon ASTM double-walled tanks from Tiles &amp; Style, DBA, Taza Supplies in South Holland, Illinois for the price of $61,786. 230515, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to enter into an agreement with Volunteer Supply Industries of Aurora in an amount not to exceed $367,190 for the purchase of lighting materials for various locations throughout the city. 230521, a resolution to award the Clark Street and White Eagle Lift Station improvements located in wards 2 and 8 to performance, construction, and engineering in the bid amount of $1,473,989. 230531, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to execute a contract with Nighthawk Video in the amount of $923,867.69 to fabricate and furnish five new video monitors and to complete additional purchases in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for any additional material purchases required to complete the installation at River Edge Park in Ward 1. 230532, a resolution authorizing the continued services of civilian fingerprint analysts Julie Smith and Gina Manetti as contractual consultants for the purpose of fingerprint analysis and identification for the Aurora Police Department. 230537, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the low bid from Jay Gill &amp; Company for repairs and maintenance of the Aurora Police Department Headquarters parking deck in the amount of $374,335 plus a contingency amount of $37,433.50. 230545, a resolution authorizing and directing the chief of staff of the office of the Alderman to encumber and expend funds allocated to Ward 7 for purposes related to the Martin Luther King Jr. Fun Fest and Back to School Bash. 230546, a resolution to award a contract to Geneva Construction Company in the amount of $1,665,556.10 for the 2023 contract number 2 city-wide sidewalk patching, striping, and bike path overlay projects. 230550, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class B on-site consumption liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from Al Huischal de Don Mamo, NVS number 2 at 815 North Lake Street in Ward 6. 230553, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to adopt unit prices submitted by Core and Main for the purchase of large census water meters. 230554, a resolution to award the contract for the White Eagle Force Main Improvements located in Ward 8 to H Linden and Sun Sewer and Water in the amount of $453,600. 230561, a resolution authorizing the execution of an option and land lease of real property located at the Aurora Municipal Airport. 230562, a resolution authorizing change orders and additional contingency for the remodeling of the city of Aurora Council Chambers Conference Rooms 5A and 5B, and the addition of a press room and communications control center using the city of Aurora Job Order Contracting Program for an amount of $272,586.48. 230564, a resolution authorizing the city to accept a grant award of $895,890 from Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board to reimburse the city of Aurora for its purchase of Body worn and Squad Cameras. 230566, a resolution approving a final plan on 2A of the second re-subdivision of Fox Valley East Region 1, Unit Number 1, with a modification to the building code amendments located at 3975 Fox Valley Center Drive. 230569, a resolution approving a revenue sharing agreement between the city of Aurora Fire Prevention Bureau and inspection reports online. 230572, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a federal emergency management agency grant in the amount of $287,659.09 towards the purchase of new fire hoses for the Aurora Fire Department. 230574, a resolution authorizing the execution of an option and land lease of real property located at the Aurora Municipal Airport. 230575, a resolution authorizing the execution of an option and land lease of real property located at the Aurora Municipal Airport. 230576, a resolution authorizing the execution of an option and land lease of real property located at the northeast corner of Sullivan and Route 25, Ward 1. 230595, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, July 25th, 2023, city council meeting.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. Before we entertain those motions, Alderman have any motions to remove any items from the consent agenda, direct to council consent agenda, or any questions, the comments? There being none, a motion and a second on the floor. Madam clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Dunell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lesh?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The consent agenda and the direct-to-council consent agenda are both approved. There is no need for unfinished business. There is no new business. There is report 23-0611 Corporate Funds Investment Report, second quarter 2023. Acknowledge receipt of the second quarter 2023 Corporate Fund Investment Report. Does staff have a presentation of the report?
Be happy to answer any questions in the interest of time.
Are there any questions or discussions on the Corporate Funds Investment Report? There being none, no action is needed on that. Is there a motion to-- Given a motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco--
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, hold on a second. Have any question, discussions on the bills? There being none, Madam clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Dunell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lesh?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no.
All right, bills have been approved. There is no further business to come before city council.
Motion to adjourn.
By Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.